Let the record reflect on President's presence. Councilman Joe Burrow, Councilman George Rodriguez, Councilman Elias, Councilman Corleone, Mayor of San Antonio, and myself. Let the record show that the former president. This is the pastor, Derek Schrader, for the Church Christ of the United States.
Let's pray. Our Father, the Creator and Sustainer of our lives until this very moment in time. We thank you for every blessing that we have from your gracious hand. Father, we thank you and we pray for every family and every individual in our good community. We pray, Father, a special blessing for Nolan Haney, elementary school student, for heart surgery that he is scheduled to have on March the eighth. We pray, Father, for this precious child and his family, the doctors who attended him. We also pray, Father, for Colleen Hudson, a ten-year-old in need of a liver transplant. Father, we pray you will provide and bless this child and this family. Father, we thank you so much for those who serve our community, for those who seek to protect us, for those who teach our children. Help us, Father, to treat one another as we want to be treated and to love our neighbors as they are self. In the name of Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move on to public heads book. First person, one person with great Cooper.
Can I speak at the agenda item, please, Baron?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Please remind me if I forget.
Very much, thank you.
Move on to item five, Baron, announcer's reports, presentation, presentations. Present our presentation for Kalen Buller from the Convalley Center for Veteran Services Program.
Good evening. My name is Kalen Buller. I'm the veteran of the Veterans Services Corps, and I'm certified by the Texas Veterans Commission. I'm here to request the mayor, Chris Holker. Thank you for having me. I'm a retired first sergeant, the US Army. I was a paratrooper and general master for thirteen years. I served twenty-one total. I served six tours in combat overseas and I served three tours overseas in humanitarian assistance. The only thing that gives me greater pleasure than serving and leading paratroopers is serving veterans in our community. You are a city within the county of Johnson County, which is covered by my local male health authority, Convalley Centers. I'm gonna leave a couple of the brochures that appear for anybody that maybe would like to have a copy of that and then also some literature provided by the Texas Veterans Commission on Veterans Benefits. You should have these readily available at the county courthouse in Johnson County in Cleveland. It will be nine where you find the veteran service officers that provide services for your veterans. Some of the things that we do at Convalley, the local male health authority for veteran services, we provide each year over $200,000 in financial assistance to grant money that's provided by the Texas Veterans Commission. We also provide well over 2,000 hours of male health services. That's therapy, counseling, substance use, trauma, those things for our veterans within our community, as well as we provide over a dozen home improvement projects for veterans that are in need. These are most of the time senior veterans who have inability to access either their home or their vehicle or their bathroom. We come in, we do an assessment, we provide the funds, the labor, the volunteer work to come in and make those homes accessible for those veterans. We come here today to kind of educate you as a city council because as a veteran myself, I'm not going to be able to reach 30,000 veterans in all the counties that I'm charged to cuss around the state of Texas. That's where I need the leaders within those communities to know who I am because your people, veterans, are going to turn to in that time of crisis. Your local faith-based organizations, your business owners, those family members, they may not know that that resource is even available, which is why it's important I get out and I shake the hands and meet the faces of those people who are leading within the community. Those are the people that I need to help. So in doing so, if you have any questions about what I can do for veterans or what I can do for their families, pretty much anything from keeping the power bill on, to changing the flat tire, to changing the water pump, to replace the roof, all these things are things that I have personally done with assistance for our veterans even right here in Johnson County. So if you have any questions or anything, I'm gonna leave my card up here as well for anyone that would like to know more. You can schedule an appointment to talk with me or my financial assistance manager or one of our teach managers for anything that you have in regards to questions regarding mental health and the like. Any questions?
So a good summary, I think, is when we have a veteran that needs something, you are the person somebody needs to help. You are the key master that begins at the right place.
I am the human compass to navigate that individual to the resource they need to mitigate whatever their crisis is. It's the simplest way that I can put it, right? Because I mean, the veteran doesn't know what he doesn't know. But if you bring a veteran to me and say, hey, I'm having some issues, I need to talk to somebody, I'm gonna know who that person is that you need to talk to. I'm gonna make sure that they're getting that resource put out there available to them, right? Because most of ninety percent of what I do is educate, network. Make sure that people know that we have this resource available and if it's available to them, it doesn't cost them anything to call, right? So those are just a couple of the things that we have. There's a whole lot more information in the pamphlet up here as far as specific services and I could go in depth and talk for hours on end on veterans' benefits, but really it just comes down to the meat and potatoes. What I'm here today is I want you to have my number, I want you to know my face. And if you have a veteran in crisis, give them my number, right? Or call me on their behalf and I'll come to you wherever they're at, right? It's pretty much just a job.
I think it's that.
What's that?
I think it's that. Do you have staff?
Staff, okay. So we have four mental health professionals that are all licensed practitioners and veterans. They're either retired or they're spouses or retired veteran. There's one financial assistance manager and there's myself. And that's pretty much it. We do provide peer-to-peer services. We provide counseling on a daily basis. Comes down to if they call today and they schedule an appointment, we're gonna be able to see them this week, right? As normally, we can only get somebody in within the next forty-eight hours as far as mental health services. Financial assistance takes a little bit more time because there is some hoops to jump through in order to make sure that we're getting checks cut to the proper people who are owing that money. We have the power company, the water company, the gas company. It really just depends on where it is. We're pretty efficient, even though we're a small team, we take care of each other and we take care of our own.
So with such a small team, do you take outside of your area stuff with those veterans?
Yes, I have a team of about eight volunteers right now that in some capacity, on their free time, they do come in, it's actually part of what we call the Military Veteran Peer Network. That's the team that is sponsored by the Texas Veterans Commission. Essentially what it means is that they've been identified as a volunteer, they've been vetted, and they get their accreditation through me. So as long as they're on my team and I know that they've got a packet filled out with me, then they're good to provide peer-to-peer services and then also link things back into our program. But yes, we do have a volunteer program. We work very closely with our service organizations, with the American Legion, the VFW, BVB, MOA, Marine Corps Detachment Unit. We probably have a foot in the door already with the volunteers on that team. So yes, networking is again ninety percent of what I do. Any other questions? Do you want to add your answer? All right, well, it's very pleasant to be here. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, for inviting me here. Councilmembers, it's a pleasure to meet you, sure, everyone of you all. God bless, have a good evening. And then I'm gonna take my chair there before we have a distraction.
So we're moving on to Mayor's report. In December, I was approached by Pittsburgh rail workers about a bounty night. They asked me about Sockville, announced Sockville and who's a good idea. So I passed it off to our Eliza Duncan, our events coordinator. She went through everything and we added in the school district and the Chamber of Commerce. So that is one of the first things we're all working together to promote. They had their first meeting. Eliza is not making tonight, she will be at her next meeting to promote our thing on this. And they had their first meeting with rail workers on the thirty-first. As of now, the event is scheduled to take place on Friday, May twenty-fourth. And currently working on a program recruiting participants for National Anthem for the first pitch and recognizing the hometown hero. Also on the seventh, I met with Commissioner Bailey. He came up here and Thomas, myself, I had Thomas, Republic Works, come out with what he thought some of our worst roads that Commissioner Bailey could come and look at. Went after him around. Commissioner Bailey sent an estimated over for working on three of the streets. We need to get an Iowa leg of them. This is a rough estimate, what he was looking at for repairing three of the streets is roughly just under $19,000. It would definitely need some more descriptions in what he was talking about and make sure the public works is agreed with this before we present it to the council. One of the other things that we discussed with the Iowa leg is being able to buy our raw materials for them. You know, on the last purchase, I'm told that for the coal minutes, we paid $146 a ton. If you were writing the county, it's seventy-three dollars a ton. For the bags of rock asphalt, that's on the buy bid? Bid by? Bid by?
Abbot.
Buy by, I'm sorry. So that's a constant point of when we hit here in the county, we get it ourselves. But one of the other things that they're recommending is to use for the patch repair is Easy Street, which is another bagged item. The market value on that right now is $28 a fifty-pound bag and we'll be able to get through the county for eleven. With materials and work that they're going, it's purely a cost, there is no profit with the kind of the maintenance office. So Thomas will hit a little bit more on this when he does his report, but that is one, two things I looked at in the past little over a month. Any questions for the council? Which streets? It's West River, I think you know West River, High Point and Lynx. It is where we've been there, just at the bottom of the break on the left.
This entire, for Main Street to the end of railroad and then all of High Point, all of Lynx?
This is some things that we would need to specifically work out for start and stop points with Commissioner Bailey. Is there more questions? We move on to the Senate agenda. Discuss the FASCO action on approval of the obvious minutes for the regular meeting held on February sixth, twenty twenty-fourth.
So on the Hunter Park negotiations, it says councilwoman for Alcras and since the motion carried forward, she wrote a point of abstention. She'd have to be four zero.
Is that what she wanted?
I see what you're talking about. Obviously.
Other than that, I'll make a question to the City Council minutes on the regular meeting held on February sixth, twenty twenty-fourth.
Motion by the Republican half of Congress and a second by the councilperson Elias to approve the minutes from the February sixth meeting, what can change to councilwoman? Any further discussion?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Motion carries by zero. We're gonna have the staff reports. Please, partner.
Two crank travel left, just a little bit before we got started. He threw his life in the hospital. But you have your report and interacted. And one of the things he wanted to do was introduce you all to Timothy Sanchez. Timothy was interviewed back in January the thirtieth for the Animal Control and Code of the Worship monster. And he was the one that was chosen for the position. So we wanted to make sure you all got Timothy Sanchez.
Good evening, council. I'm sorry. It's all okay. Of course, I want to say my name is Timothy Sanchez. A little bit about my background. I've been training dogs for about seven years, tracking, protection, protection, et cetera. I led you to work for the city of Dallas. I was there for about a year. After leaving Dallas, I went to the Department of County Sheriff's Office. I was there for a short amount of time. And then I'm here, wanting to start, you know, fresh and, you know, continue being the CEO for another state and definitely want to start serving this community and educating this community. And if you'd like to ask questions, they can come to me and I can fill them in. I want to see if you guys had any questions for me that I can answer. I know this is the first time you guys meet me tonight.
Yes, well.
Thank you, okay. Got something you want?
We move on to item D, Park Department, Chief Tompkins.
Need me, Mayor, or council? You have my report. Park Department ran a hundred and forty-five calls from January. We had ten fire calls, ninety-eight medical calls, and various other miscellaneous service calls. Six false alarms. Service call. Do that question again? I was thinking about it before the meeting. Some of those are, we give a lot of calls for children locked in cars. People go and do vehicle unlocks. That's an example of a service call. Since you've asked that question before. Other than that, do you have any other questions on Fire Department report?
Please, false alarms, I think it's people calling fires and they're being there and they fire.
Yeah, for instance, early this morning about 5:00 AM, we got called for a grass fire and it was a gentleman burning a tree smoke. So false alarm, false call. Sometimes the false alarms, like the six hundred series calls in our recording system are, six-eleven is a common one that we'll use if we are dispatched and canceled and route that. It's a lot on the better call arms than there is. Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you. I don't want to, when we get a refire. When we get a refire.
You move on to public works.
Good evening, council. I have my report in front of you. Do you have any questions for me?
First off, thank you for giving us a report that needs some.
Sure. Mainly, we've been hitting a lot of hot holes, I know there's a party of thousands. We've kind of rigged the streets from worst to bad. We've been hitting them every day, so we're getting there.
What do you think about eleven twenty-eight?
It's got a lot of work. We went out and did some, a lot of it has settled, so we need to put more in, kind of flush it off on top.
We're gonna have to have a county to do the size.
More than likely. More than likely. That was on the list, the ones that we showed briefly. Gotta wait for thirty-one thousand.
So on the State Department entries? Seems like almost every month they're jetting a line along one seventy-one. Is there still what seems to be an issue now?
So the issue with that is it goes from big to small. So all that's backing up, once it hits right at Del Norte, coming in on a small line, it all backs up, pushes back out again. We've been constantly jetting it. So that's infrastructure that needs to be looked at.
What do you mean it comes from a big? Is it a big line beating into a smaller line?
Yes.
How much is a smaller line, how many beat?
That I don't know. I can find out for it.
Then what it is, replace it.
So I know you are taking over for Kevin. Do you know about the one seventy-one new sewer line?
The new sewer line? I have heard of that.
So that problem will be fixed. Lynn, Kevin, and someone else. I was working on a new sewer line that was supposed to go from Wildcat Ranch. Most they continue to build a high school, build across one seventy-one. Peterson, come down this side of the railroad tracks all the way to go pre-grade here and cut back across. And those businesses are supposed to stay on the old line and alter homes and stuff. And businesses that way, which is what we're going.
Luckily, we'll get that information through the plan that comes tomorrow. It's supposed to be bringing information for engineers now. So that'll be good, I'll be very much.
That's gonna stand out.
Yeah, catastrophic, what exactly is that, please?
So.
Thomas, before you get going, why don't you step closer to my screen?
Yes, yes. So I don't know, it was two weeks ago, we were at the plant, did everything for the bags. And the main skimmer arm that goes around the butterfire, it broke, so it kind of dropped down in. Once that happened, we put a lot of torque on the motor, so we had to cut the system off. Otherwise, we'd burnt the motor up and not working properly. Luckily, the new box plant that we had was already ready to go online. So we spent the next forty-eight hours pumping over and there and fixing problems that came up. It was successful, so everything worked out. There were little issues along the way, PVC fences that weren't done correctly. We just, we did it, fixed it, and moved on.
So what's the plan with the new, with the old plans?
So we're getting, we're still waiting on, what was it? The... blowers. We're still waiting on the blowers to get fixed. Once we can get the rest of the sludge over from the radiation basin on the old plant into the box plant, we can bring it down far enough where they can come in and start fixing the skimmer arm. Once that's done, we're gonna split between the three plants and run all three at the same time.
What type of gas can you get at that point?
I'd have to look at the permit, I don't have that all ten. We're running pretty close to capacity on the box plant right now, so we're gonna have to bring it over to online.
I think Danny said once that comes online, it'll be like a hundred thousand gallons?
That sounds about right.
Just without the rate then?
Yes.
I'm thinking he said the permit was for six hundred thousand gallons?
Yeah, I think so. I know, we're not even close to that yet.
So would it benefit the city to pay down the plant that's currently down? The one's referred, the one's down in the box plant. Would it benefit the city to refer that, the one that's down currently?
It's still in good working conditions, hard to know right now. I mean, once we pump it down, we'll get a better look on it. The arm is the only thing that's the issue so far, but hopefully we pump it down, problems will settle themselves.
Well, this road repair estimate, what is the material y'all been using to patch the road with?
So it's been just normal coal mix.
I bet it came up, Kevin had come up with another type of mix.
So that's what, it's rock asphalt. It's a lot more expensive and we only had a pallet of it because of how expensive it is. I was able to get thirteen tons of the coal mix delivered, nineteen hundred dollars per cent. Close to that for just a pallet and it doesn't go very far.
Okay. But there's something that you found a real piece of over a neighbor.
This Easy Street is up the water activated?
Yes. And that is much cheaper than the rock asphalt. Personally, I think it works better.
Commissioner Bailey did say he would throw a few bags in his truck and come out and demonstrate and allow us to sample it and compare and see which is better.
So currently, y'all still run over into the hot holes with the truck to compact it?
Yes.
Have y'all thought about buying it to compact it?
We have one that needs to get fixed and repaired.
Is it gonna cost a lot of effort or is it disposable?
I don't think so. I think it's just gonna be plugs and wires and getting drained out the old fuel. I just haven't looked at our budget to see what's in it yet for it.
Do you say it's been sitting for a while?
Saying it's been.
It's been sitting for a while then?
Yes, ever since I've been here, I haven't seen it work.
Oh.
We found it out at system one's warehouse, so it's starting to get a little. Looking it over and hopefully get it back up and running.
I know we've lost a grant for the water meters. What do we stand on the coal that we were going by?
That I haven't heard anything about. We, I've heard them talk about it here, but I haven't been told, hey, go pick it up here.
You don't see a stack of culverts out there?
No, sir.
Anything else that was, uh, hasn't been fixed yet or bought yet that we've talked about? I don't remember anything of the meters and the coal, or anything else that we had projected buying that we haven't yet?
Not on that.
Where we at with the well on the street? We've had three. So are we completely fixed? We've kind of had a real rundown for three weeks.
So the first two issues, those have been fixed. The third issue, it's been mandated for now, so we won't have any more water loss. That's gonna take digging it up and replacing the valve underground.
May I have a projected fix date for that?
Next week.
Next week?
Yes. We're gonna try to make it to Tuesday.
Thank you.
You did a wonderful job, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir. Move on to city secretary's office.
Okay, so currently in the city secretary's actual office, sorry. I am currently working on the elections for the special election for the alcohol permit. And I'm currently working on for the mayor and the city council member position, that is open. And you also have an Iowa agreement today with the city of Garland School District to share a joint location. Election location. I'm currently working on updating the ordinances with American Legal, they haven't been updated in over a year. So I'm currently gathering those to update the online, um, American Legal. And I'm also working on updating the city website until we do decide to look at something else. As far as developments go, on Friday, me and Angie plus the city engineers are gonna meet with Johnson County and J C Sin. To figure out a plan when it comes to fighting within the ETJ as well as the water. If the new developments are gonna even have water to for, to for these. And then also discussing development requirements and the responsibility for each agency. To make sure that we are all on the same page when it comes to the plats and the new developments. And we currently have several developments in review, I have listed the ones. These are ones that have already been pre-approved for a different basis or they were already in the works before me and Angie came on. So we're still in the process of getting these finalized and getting the documents submitted. We're also meeting with different developments every other Thursday, uh, me and the engineers personally. Trying to just hash out any misunderstandings or anything that's missing. Because we still currently don't have the records from the fire city engineer, so we're kind of working it online, so it's just taking us a little bit longer. And the municipal court, we actually met with the judge and the prosecutor, me and Amber. And to establish court orders, procedures, and get the documents started. We're looking to start documents in March of twenty twenty four. The reason for that is because we've had that walk and there were boxes that we needed to go through to make sure the court records were in order. Because you don't want to have somebody commence in court and not have everything that you need and scramble, which is not a good. So we're working on that from the past and the present, the records retention in the court, just getting everything organized to move forward. We worked aside a new prosecutor, so he's gonna come tomorrow to the. And then utility billing, we're working on creating a utility billing policy. So the residents are aware of what's allowed and what's not allowed when it comes to utility billing on a consistent basis. Um, we're also working on the fee schedule, that's something Angie's working on to look at the water and sewer rates. And we were looking at the sewer averaging, we're looking into that to see if that's something that the city has done in the past, so it needs to go into effect on the Hankville mill. But we're locating that ordinance. And we're gonna start third-party billing, Conair says in March we'll do that at Hankville after we finish the sewer averaging. Don't have any questions?
On the developments in review, the K M G D P. We denied the preliminary back in September.
Um, that, that wasn't included in that file. It came to council, but that wasn't included in the K M G. Uh, K M G D P file, right now the engineers are reviewing the American Health System documents. Was there a reason for the denial?
Uh, the engineer asked us to deny.
Okay, had the engineers request, I don't have that document, so I wasn't aware of that.
Do we have any other shop talk items that weren't taken care of that you've come across?
Uh, yes, there were shop talk items, items that had been submitted before I had started, items that had come to council for approval, but. Really were needing other items once I met with the current city engineer, but due to the shop talk, we had to go ahead and approve those. Um, it was Coyote Crossing. Eagle, Eagle Creek, and, um. Starts with this, hold on, I'm sorry. There's one, still water. There was still water, Coyote Crossing and, um, Eagle Creek. Those were on the shop talk. Those were things that came in before we had a city, before we had a new city engineer, as well as before there was any administration or. Need the city secretary, those came right when we started, so it was on the shop talk. And we did have to confer with the city's office regarding those and the letters and sign bottom of the slides.
So all three of these have been approved without the council?
Yes. Well, they had already come to council before.
Two. Which?
I think it was three.
Yeah, that's right.
Phase three?
Coyote Crossing was phase three? So were all these in final, final stage when filed that, when they got shop talk?
Yes, they were in final.
What are we standing on increasing the fees for all these developments and stuff, we're talking about for two years?
Um, well, I don't know, about a year ago, but for right now. For right now, we are currently working on redoing the whole fee schedule because we have a contract with Bureau of Listos, which allows us. They have these already set and we're looking into adopting those for, for developments, for developments.
That's through or are we getting to?
That's, that would come, that would come to you at our next meeting and work session. Because it's gonna take a lot of time to sit down and talk about all of the fee schedules. Um, you, I guess back in twenty one and twenty two, the council had a water rate, water wastewater rate study done. And so that was provided by me by Mayor Proteam. And so I've taken that information and looked at a lot of it. So I'm about halfway finished with it. Then Bureau of Virtus has a fee schedule within the contract that I signed in August of twenty twenty three. That really all we can do is go in, protect it to the attorneys and adopt it as part of our fee schedule. That should cover our development costs. Where some that you have already on the books in the fee schedule are a little bit, they're either lower or a little bit higher. If they're higher, we do the back, if they're lower, we need to burn them up to what those fees are. So that's, that comes to our next council meeting and some of that is in our report as well.
You wanted to know if those fees are passed through, correct?
Well.
Some are lower.
Yeah, some are lower and some are higher. Um, and some, we need to have the administrative seat there. So, um, one of the things that, I don't know if we could get into that because I'm getting off the subject. But Bureau of Virtus, um, has a planning part of that in your contract. And so all of this will tie together at the next meeting when we're together and I'll explain all that to you. When we talk about these things and things like that.
So I'm still looking at stage one. Is that the P D? That wasn't signed back in twenty two?
The planned development, that wasn't signed? And after finally got to it, it was our final class stage, I'll have to go back and look exactly as to the detail. Sorry, there's just so many developments that sometimes it just all runs together. But most of these are already the ones that have already come to council before. And everything had already been previously processed or Glenn had already gave his comments and they just were still silent.
Are we still losing money on our water? Part of our public works?
In the water department? Yes, the residents would be increased, there were not, like, these were not being charged previously for a while. Water was not being cut off or not paying, there are several people who have not paid water bills to make it four or five months. So we didn't force, like, these this month and we were all.
Just in general though, are we sure it's up to date? Are we still losing money?
Yes.
Nope.
I'm guessing, I was, I've been hearing that too, you, we're, I'm working on that right now with our C P A. Think there's some things that need to be done with our budget to look at it a little bit better. But, um, I don't think it's quite as bad as y'all think it is. But especially since, uh, they did, they did do send out late notices and we are in the procedural cutoff list. And then proceed with cutting off this time. And you, and there's a lot of outstanding, um. A lot of outstanding bills. A lot of the same.
And then the amount that you allow the, has to be over a hundred dollars before they'll even initiate the cutoff. That was your previous process. So we're gonna work on working that down to where we can get anybody who's over. Twenty five dollars, who owes over twenty five dollars will automatically hit that list so we can see. Because right now it's at a hundred dollars, so people are not accustomed to the bidding process, so we're trying. We've put it on the bills to be, I've sent out a late notice this month so that they're aware of the process. But it's just gonna take a little time for residents to use it.
So what's the late date on our bills for water?
The late date right now is the fifteenth of June. The bills come out on the first of the month and then you have until the fifteenth at five PM, anything after five PM is considered next to this.
When did they get updated from tenth? It used to be tenth.
I would have to go back and village.
That's okay, don't worry about it.
That's what I was wondering, because my bill used to auto pay on the tenth. And now since my.
I think that started when the war came, when they, you had no cutoff days, you had no deadlines. And so they started with fifteen because of the way they were reading the meters on that machine. So they had to push it out five days to make enough time to get somebody the time they needed to pay it, so.
It was already like that when I came here, as far as looking for certain things, as far as the procedure and the policy, very simple.
So is section fifty point zero five? We're working this since the tenth day, which is not, we're not figuring out.
So there's a five day rest period. That's there. But that's what it was sort of set up as, and I'm just saying it now, but I'm pretty sure we talked about it morning, I've talked about it a couple times. But I don't know, I'll have to get that back. Being processed currently.
Anything else for city secretary?
How's the judge working out?
Um, he's okay. He's okay, I would say give him a chance to see how he works the docket, because you haven't really seen him work in the court as far as the responses. Um, it's not very consistent. From like, from even from a court background, it's not very consistent, but I would say give him a chance because he really hasn't had to work a docket or anything. So I don't think it's enough time to really measure how it will work.
Anything else?
You're welcome.
Move on to city administrator.
So if you have time, a court in front of you, and I mean, I had time for you to. Um, if you have any questions, we can get started on. I provided a vendor report and an updated budget report for you. These budget reports are gonna be changing up. Um, because there is some changes that need to be in different areas where, um. Some of the invoices have not been coded correctly, so we're making some of those changes. So the next one you see maybe is a little bit different, different line items, it's because we're correcting them. And so that they're coming out with the correct, uh, department.
You talking about the cash collection history report?
On your vendor report?
Right.
The vendor report is a kind of a long report. That shows all of, everything that's been paid for the month of January. That'll show all the payments that were done for the month of January. So we were notified January thirty first, the city had not responded to a workers' compensation audit. And so I have a week to respond to the workers' compensation audit from T M L. Uh, one of the things that we, we passed, sort of. Uh, one of the things we had to correct was all of the employees were put into the in-code system as an administrator. Basically like secretary, that includes police hire and. Uh, those had to be cleaned up and taken care of. And then your five full-time firefighters that started, I believe in twenty twenty two, or October twenty twenty two. Were never established with T M L workers' comp. So we had a rate change, they'd make an adjustment eighty eight, eighty eight hundred and nine dollars. But we are now in compliance. All that has been cleaned up, all that's been taken care of. So now we do show that we have firefighters through workers' compensation and it's gonna change our rates up this coming year. So right now, in order to cover us for the remainder of this year and for what we didn't have prior to, it'll be eighty eight oh nine that we'll need to take care of. In the permit, y'all have any other questions about finance? I'm moving on, in the permits, we had eighteen new bills, so bills that were submitted in Ford Bureau. Twenty five new, new bill permits were invoiced in the amount of twenty four thousand one fifty nine ninety eight. That was passed through the Bureau. Two thousand three hundred ninety six dollars were our administrative fees, and those were our revenues. There were six thousand dollars in tax fees. And twenty eight thousand seven hundred twenty eight dollars in sewer impact fees that were saved in revenues. And there's a new bill permits that were issued, so total sixty one thousand two eighty four fifteen that was generated in fees of the permits inside. And then I had attached a cash collection history report for you on that, to show you the permit and the impact base, that's probably what you have in the. I think Kevin. I think Thomas does cover everything with public works. And Brittany is pretty much covering everything with engineering and elections.
Who will have the election of alcohol permit?
It'll be the same date as the Bureau of Labor Department.
Uh, we didn't have the public work directors, job description on T M L, we received five years' long.
Who wants?
Goodness, yes. Um, something we need to talk about in the next council meeting, we'll talk about, we'll do about the budget, sure enough, our work session. It's gonna be that. We're gonna have to look at that salary. Because you know you get work type warrants.
Yeah, you do.
And right now, uh, with Danny kind of leading the way for everything and he has the lawsuits. That's something to take into consideration that we wouldn't be using him as much. And so there's some monies there that we're gonna have to come up with to get someone who has those type of lawsuits. Um, but we do have, we have quite a few really good applications. And there isn't. Uh, permit, I spoke a little bit to Councilman Miles. Um, I have a permit clerk that I've, clerks that I've interviewed, talked to. And I'm probably gonna be off in a position to tomorrow. And then I'll get back with all of you in town like you know, also doing email letting you know how that response goes. She does have a lot of experience. She was a former senior permit clerk at City of War and then she worked with City of Los Angeles. So I'm pretty excited about that. So we're nearly full with that.
It's very busy.
It's been busy. There's times we walk in, I walk in between seven, seven-thirty in the mornings and I might look out till five, about fifteen. So it's pretty busy. We've been really, really busy. But I think I can see a lot at the end of the term.
Are we gonna cover the salary for the permit clerk? Since we've only got, we're at twenty-four hundred dollars in admin fees for last month.
You have what?
Only got twenty-four hundred dollars in admin fees or permits.
On admin fees?
Yes.
Are you talking about the revenues coming in?
Yeah, for the permit.
Well, I believe that's budgeted, but I have to go back and look. We're gonna have some budgeted monies um for that position. If I'm not mistaken, but I've had to go back and look. That's one of the things that we're working with the CPA side of this, which then becomes, you know. There's ones that, that, that we need to look at. And we may have to come back with measures of them. And I know when you hired me, that was one of the things you wanted was permits for someone that can stay on top of your development. They're not gonna be able to handle the whole thing. Uh, we are gonna try to uh use Bureau or cause. They have, this is relevant to, they have a planning, a planner that's within your contract that you sign that we can use. And that could be a passer to the developers. So we've gotta have some kind of professional planning here to help with the growth of the city. Or for the continued growth of the city. Gotta have something like that. Right now, I've asked that they go ahead and build us a base map. We don't have a base map of the city. Not a novated one. And so from there, then we'll start working on the zoning. Then the zoning will overlay the ba, the base map and the annexation will come in. Because we have to have something to work with. Be quite honest with you, we're pretty much in the dark. We have a two thousand and seven zoning map. That's really not cut it too much. So we have to take the Johnson County map, build it up against the zoning map and try to figure this out. And I'm really proud of how her groupies work. Um, she's worked really hard to get things into place the way they should have. A lot of her. Um, so that's where we're at.
So this permit clerk is just making permits straight later and the planning zoning side and all that?
Right. She has, yeah, she has planning. She has been, has planning and zoning experience as well. So she would be able to handle all that, the notifications, zoning requests. If you get a zoning board or if you don't have a zoning board, council becomes B and Z and she would be taking care of all that. Plus, I'm like a cross train. There's absolutely no reason she would be able to take more than payments as well. I take them later.
Any more questions?
Well, we have somewhere posted where the early voting, where the early voting and everything will be. So this is a little. Right now, we have it posted on the website. And then we can, have you posted on a posting board yet? I think that goes out on our posting and we start seeing that. It'll also run in newspapers and not be published along by those. But we, we just ordered supplies for the election, which is early voting here, those kind of things. Because we don't even have ballot boxes here. So we've had to order a lot of supplies. But in the interim, we can put that, it's on the website, we can put it out here. Uh, I'm sending Michael to have it put on Facebook, that way it's on there.
You don't have access to Facebook?
You just send it and he posts it for us. So we can, you know, those are, those are our three connections to get that out to the community.
Why do you not have access to Facebook?
To city Facebook page?
So you like the answer? Yes, please. I don't have access to the city Facebook page because I haven't been given the access. I don't want to commit it to my personal Facebook page. Um, I've created a couple of like generic pages that they've gotten reported, so I'm not able to get that. So who's, who, who has control of that page? Mike has always had control of that page. Michael's the only one that can post besides Mary Leaker actually. But Mary Leaker's not an administrator upon office.
No, you're a law firm user. Full pommes and required chief for that and pommes except for, I don't know, Brian did. That way, that was on request, it's the mayor. And you know it happened and handed over it. Because Facebook requires you to attach a page to an account. She tried to create some accounts before I even accepted, they got flagged. And no new accounts were created, so additional users were created too.
So what are we gonna do in the year I'm in office in May? How are you gonna transfer that over to?
Me and Brian, Brian said that he would get the, he's gonna get the admin rights for me. And then he'll go, and I'll create another page. And every time I create one, all time it just gets reported, so I can't use it. So he and Brian are gonna work on it too, so that I can take over the Facebook before I close out the office.
Yeah, because it's important we get information out of our social services so that we can adopt that.
Yeah, but I've tried.
Just that why I looked back for the invite, I couldn't hide it. So we do that.
Maybe you will post several voting hours at the same location out here for the citizens and all?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business.
We have locals too, I think that. Adams, um. Yeah, Adams B and he will be back.
You ready, Jennifer?
Yeah.
We'll go on to I R D. Especially the possible action across for the upgrade and separation of the city. Current server and various changes to the IT infrastructure. We receive this compliance and Johnson County SO compliance to participate in the communications and CAD services project.
I'm not trying to get there. Okay, so in December of twenty twenty-three, I was contacted by Jeff Brining. With total survey regarding employees and the administrative server evaluation and security of city infrastructure and parts of Johnson County Sheriff's Office contract for communications and other to the CAD services project. This, this CAD service has to go live October twenty twenty-four. That means everything has to be taken care of before, I mean, October twenty twenty-four for us to continue to have services for communications for our place. Uh. After he contacted me, we sat down and we went through a tips agreement. And cat the cost of fifteen thousand dollars. Cause that's my capital purchasing to initiate the contract to the form evaluation of our infrastructure. I'm not gonna get in particulars because I'm, I'm not a mean techy at all. But a firewall was placed in our system due to the fact that we had so many access points that were found that were being a remote access at the initial valuation. Just at the first glance and the first look at the infrastructure. Correct me if I'm wrong, right?
Right.
This server holds both police and administrative information. The police side of the records are considered SEJIS, which is Criminal Justice Information System record that requires that anyone that accesses these records have SEJIS certification. Which is a requirement. The certification is administered by the FBI and designated to ensure that organizations have the necessary security measures in place to protect the SEJIS information. And the administration information contains city financials such as our banking information, employees' personal information, social security numbers, dates of birth, all regarding their person, and regarding our employees' personal banking information that's used for payroll processing. All of that have access to, everywhere.
Is that the main controller or is that the twenty thirteen machine? I mean, the one that's twenty sixteen machine?
Yeah, because the V C one, the V C one and all the shared files were accessible.
Everything's well open.
Are you saying they were accessible by someone remotely? Additionally, it was found that our Wi-Fi that was in these castle chambers also through our camera system, you have something that's wrong, had access to our system as well, right? So that's why we have not been streaming the way we should have been. We could get our voice, which couldn't get camera because the camera was dangerous for us to have on. Cause it had access to our system. I'm not a techy person, but I do know that when we have that many holes in our system, we have a problem. I'm SEJIS certified. And by no means do I want to look at police records because that just opens me up a lot of. But anyone who's not SEJIS certified, and I know this to be a fact because when you go into our system, it says administration, police department. Those, all those files were right there for anybody to get into. And that's a problem. That's a huge problem. And Johnson County hired Toto to make sure that our system was in compliance. And of course, we're not. We're not even close to being compliant with SEJIS. I don't know how the chief passed the SEJIS audit last year. I have no clue. Don't know.
Did you have a vote?
Oh, they did it remotely. That's right. I forgot. They did it remotely. That's why. They didn't come look and contest. Sorry, sorry. Are you, are you telling, telling us that our police department records, confidential information has been accessed remotely? All of our financials, things have been, are being looked at. It was accessible. It was accessible. Just telling you the way it was sent out, it was accessible. So I have Toto here tonight to answer any of your questions about that because I'm, I'm not all that great. But I haven't had common sense to know that what they explained to me was very serious. So my fault, I didn't send you the police quote. That was my bad. I've been sending them on to you so you could see it.
Is that fifteen sixty-six or twenty?
Not fifteen, fifteen sixty-six.
Alright, so this is the police department alone.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, if you want to add any question, I need you to go to the mic number in the third recorded plus place.
This is Jeff Brining, Pete Ponce Toto and Patrick Howard.
He has a lot of details. He didn't cancel. Um, I'm, I can answer any question for refers to the Sheriff's Office of County. Well, it was requested of us to check with all of the independent cities that fall in Johnson County and part of the CAT. Uh, Patrick, can we go to detail on each of the other quotes? Um, are there any questions as far as, well, is accessible and why or how?
Is there a way to trace who was accessing any of those records or any police records that from the outside?
There, there's always ways. Um, we, we can really get into that some.
So is the D C, is the D C the machine, the, that's the twenty nineteen machine, right? Is there a twenty nineteen order to tell me how it works?
I think it is.
Which is that, is that the twenty nineteen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that Mr. Reeves?
Yes, I have Mr. Reeves.
Uh, so that one's okay. We need to move everything off. No, it's not. So, so your current servers are running O O S. Um, it's not patchable anymore. It's SEJIS compliant.
It's the twenty sixteen machine, but not from.
They're all ones, they're all ones.
They're all, those are all ones.
The machine itself is, or it's newer, but nineteen is newer and it's still running all O O S.
So it's like a good, hey, this old.
We saw, we saw devices in the city running Windows seven. Um, not that, that's in the police department. None of it is compliant. We, we would, we were, we are recommending that everything in the data center is regular ones. They complete overall. It's long overdue. Most of that equipment is well over seven years old. Some of it is techy. And the current, well, before we put a firewall in, existing firewalls were not SEJIS compliant.
Okay, so that's, that's handled for now.
Well, it's, it was ours. We, I.
Appreciate that.
We were requested by county to put something in place. So we did.
Can we do the P D first and wait? So currently, the P D quote is for replacing everything in that data center. And what we would do is set up segmented network and segment the city and the P D the way it's supposed to be. So, so it would be excellent. Hence the two Dell servers and the um, the storage array. You want two Dell servers for each segment and storage. We, we do it on P M's, but we're, if we're gonna spend the money, it's better to pull the Band-Aid one time, replace it and build the city into a situation for the next five to seven years. We have equipment in there that we can grow it to. And I believe hopefully Donald will be taking care of it and fully for you. Managing it.
Managing it, that's correct, yeah.
We're important.
Give us somewhat of a fragrance. Um, we, there's certain areas that, um, nothing about T D, but that must be connected to doctors for the cloud instance for P D to touch. And we have to separate those. Those have to be on devices that are under current maintenance, which obviously you can't do with what you currently have. So if you had to do that anyway for P D, you might as well set up, put your servers and then separate them by P M's. So then the city could operate off those as well for storage array as well. And just keep them set up.
It looks like you want two servers for both the bar for P D and the city. Is that right?
Two, two total.
Two, two total. See, the, the bits are confusing to me.
I saw it. It was very confusing when we first, it's hard to separate just P D without looking at how it's settled today and then making sure that it's compliant with both the doctors and SEJIS and Sheriff's Office. So in doing so, it's almost like you have to replace the primary secretary with P M's and the storage array to support the S O, but the city can rile back of that demand. Does that make sense?
Sure. And so that's what you're going to do really is not for service.
Not to, not for.
Okay. Can we, uh, do we have that somewhere or is that coming?
One more time.
And well, just to have a fifth, fifth kill, thousand six as for the. And well, just to have a bid, 1566 as for the 1566. No, that's just PD. That's my understanding. It's just police.
Overwhelmed. That is, that is police department. But like he was saying, we can't separate police department from the city. I mean, we can if we wanted to. We could leave what's there for the city, move police data off and set up a separate stack. But currently, everything's all together. So we're going to have to pull the data off, put it on a new server and set up a new array for the PD. It would be two free standing systems. Makes more sense to go in there, replace it, segment the network, set it up properly so that moving forward, the city and PD can still run on the same physical servers, just virtualized, segmented.
Is that why you're looking for four Microsoft licensing back on me? Here, just one close.
Yeah, the Microsoft licenses.
Yep. Is that going to really be two or is it four?
It's, it's, it's four. There's four, there's four processors, two in each server.
All right. So just two servers, not four. One Dell storage array for the 34,000. And then what, since this is just, the rest of the stuff that was cameras and whatnot, is that, where does that come in? Where's that deal?
So when we first talked to Angie, she wanted a quote for everything within the city that we saw that was out of compliance.
1488.
Next one. 1488, which includes all the well sites. So currently, none of your well sites are home as compliant. Neither is your water treatment. So we just, we felt quote based on what we've done in other cities that get them compliant. We don't, we don't have a dog in this time.
No, no. It was just confusing. Look at the bids because it looked like we were going to have, you know, four servers, two storage arrays.
I get where your confusion is because she saw the four Microsoft licenses.
No, I saw PD quote was two and then I saw another 15 or 1488.
So she wanted options. A trimmed down version and everything is what I was asked to look for. We also segmented the Microsoft conversion. Is your current running on Google?
Yeah.
So that's on a separate quote. So technically, we could do the PD quote, which would entail part of the city, the city's well, redo that, that whole stack. Okay? Microsoft conversion, moving everything off of Google and moving everybody into Microsoft, into Microsoft.
That was the bid. That was the quote that had the four server licenses that I have.
Correct. That's my four server licenses. If we're going to put it on the, on the two servers with the four processors, we're going to have four licenses.
So it's quote 1488. Is that included?
Then that, that would be all inclusive.
That's all inclusive.
Microsoft, that would be all the well sites, that would be PD and city, that's everything.
Yeah, that's why I was just making sure.
Cameras throughout the whole city. Redo the air fiber point-to-point system. We redo it all and create topology.
So this 1566 bid for police department makes solely enough to give us compliance and legal.
For the ISO.
Yep.
For the ISO, what you won't gain compliance come September under state is part of your wire.
For hardware.
Correct. Because you won't have.
How long would this take you to do?
What's that?
If we did the bid with average nine, how long would that take you? Would the city have any downtime?
Oh, no. We would have zero downtime. It would, I would say somewhere between a month, a month and a half, depending on how quickly we can get access. But no.
No, I could be done.
And we have enough people. Yo, you're the cell.
No. I'm not, I'm the only, I honestly, I don't, I mean, for me, it doesn't matter. I want, what I'm, what I'm most concerned about is that every city we comply for it, I have to implement that trouble. That's something that's more important to me at this time because if I don't have everybody in, then I have to exclude them. If I exclude them, then you fall off the SO project. If you fall off the SO project, then you're going to be completely on your own. So I'm trying to get everybody what they have to have by October. Because that's, for us, we're going to be testing mid-June. And if we're not, if the cities aren't there by mid-June, we have to notify the DPS that they're non-compliant and we have to rework them. So then the funds that the county has set aside, the ARPA funds to help support each of the cities, everyone who's not compliant at the time will be permitted.
ARPA funds for IT agrees?
They're using ARPA funds for this CAD SO project. They hired us as part of that project because we do interfaces. We handle all the topology. We do all the SEJIS stuff with DPS. So we have to do all that for.
We're not going to be able to see a TO of the network?
You'll be able to see doors. Because we have to integrate every city, their TO vote, every other city's TO vote, and the county, and the ESD, and that's what we submit to DPS. So we have to make a master with 21 subs, if that makes sense.
Sure. Have you done that for us yet?
No. I understand you do it with your existing environment. That's for sure.
This is 1566, just, sorry, I'm a moron.
Okay.
Just for PD and the city.
Correct.
That would be everything to bring the city up to compliance.
It's just the police.
Oh, excuse me. 1566, excuse me, is the police department. So that would be, let me clarify. I titled it PD quote because she wanted a pared down version. The stack is the biggest problem for us on the ground side. That needs to replace. And that's 1566. That is correct, sir.
Ms. Hable, on the quote 1488 with that total, do we have the funds because either way, all of this stuff, whether we're getting compliant for the SEJIS or we have to get compliant for the state, has to be done, what do you say, by September?
September, you'll get it typically the state or a lease it and they'll give you between 90 and 120 days from September 1, which is the state's fiscal. So, you know, if you may get 30 days, maybe 60 days. It just depends on how impacted they are, honestly. But they will start it on the date of September 1.
You're going to have to let me get back on you and let, see what the funds are.
I think we had something like 245 for the camera upgrades and IT, didn't we?
I think it's 220.
220?
Yeah.
Okay, part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's some. There's a little bit, I think, that they were preparing for something like this, right?
I think it was.
Because I can do the cameras too. The big bid, the big bid will do all the cameras in the city, in the city, all PD as well as all the well site cameras. And Amber will do the air fiber point-to-point system. How long is that equipment going to be? I mean, I'm just curious. Get nothing to do about how long that equipment is going to be.
It's usually seven to 10 years and then as long as the PD. If the city keeps maintaining some licenses accurate, then it could go longer. I mean, the hardware is, is much better as long as you can keep the software and almost here. Once that falls out, then you have to recertify it. And I guarantee that it's firewall, the servers, weekly, client side.
Is this camera online? Is it compliant or not? No?
Is that equated with the bid?
The, which, what's that?
That's equated in the bid of breaking the system in your.
No, no. Is this a AV camera?
This is AV. Yeah.
So just, just, we weren't just the camera. We didn't do any of the AV. Just the cameras throughout the city? All the cameras in the city currently are, are Chinese.
Yeah, they're listed as the Chinese military service. Yeah.
So not AV compliant.
Correct.
And so, Ms. Rodriguez, we, and I just checked, I'm sure, there's, we're kind of, Michael, is that what you were talking about? Michael, whatever you're putting in it for city network and hardware? There's $220,000 budgeted.
Almost there.
And I believe we found some. If I can have outlook, we can.
I would attend to how I'm said to take possible action on it. So can I make a motion that we use that one item to find additional funds to get compliance for those things? Because with the, you say there's a firewall now, so it's not looking for someone to access for probably access.
I understand.
Okay. But we need to get in compliance with those of those before that camera.
Correct. Really, before June for PD side for testing, does I have to pull back to issue or do June of those who are not compliant?
So the last, in the past, has everything was certified because it was all done by a formal?
The last SEJIS after, after, one second, sir. Oh, sorry.
We do have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're talking.
Okay. I'm sorry about that, Roger.
Oh, I didn't know she was talking about it. No, she actually said, oh, that's all right. My fault. I'm listening.
I'm sorry, sir.
I just want to know, when was the last time you were in a certified?
See, y'all had a SEJIS audit after approved it. And at the time, SEJIS, DPS was truly gone and they did step over the bone. So you basically said, I checked that box and passed whether you did or not. The big flag here is the fact that the county, both dispatches, the sheriff's office and the backup, which is Cleveland, is moving the CAT system. So it's red flag everybody in the county. So there's going to be a physical audit for them. Sometime between September and November for every city. I mean, everything, car stations, everything.
So there are many other cities, districts, whatever, have a couple of, where have it?
Three.
Three.
One was red flagged. So there's, you guys have one other one.
Does this give us, I'm sorry, Roger, did you finish? Does this get Public Works Fire Department into the domain so that they're on the domain controller now?
Correct.
And that's why.
Well, it's part of, part of Fire Department. So it goes to ESD. So that's a little different. But yes, so as far as these cities concerned, then yes.
Public Works will be kind of wirelessly to the, that's correct.
Correct.
How we're designed. So we designed it to where the city can be the hub and everything else can be a hub. So everything will run off city hall. If you looked at our bandwidth.
Well, we've talked about that. I've talked to her about it. We're going to have to get a wired connection in here. And we've talked about that as well. But we just figure one thing at a time. We just want to at least get our part handled. So if we make sure you guys are compliant, we'll work out for us later.
So how much does the point between buildings? I thought that our, we have a tower lease agreement.
You have a tower lease agreement with next one?
Yes. They told me that they provide all of our point-to-points.
Well, you can't use them, at least for what we're doing. You can't use, can't use a public IP or ISB to do it. It's going to have to be your own microchats. It can't be next one. Next one's not even supposed to operate any PD data.
We can, we can use, moving forward, if you guys decide moving forward, we can use the next link connection as a redundant backup after we get away.
But PD can't.
But PD can. PD data has to be incurred.
So currently, we have PD data being transmitted.
That's correct. Not current. You can use, they, I did, they did point, right? So if, so as the credit points come in, that will be the PD backup, not next one.
So when you were trying to commit your review survey back in last year and on your positions to gain access for evaluations unsuccessful for coming into the IML system, what was the problem? Why were you not granted access?
There was, I guess there was some turmoil in the city at the time. And we weren't getting, given some access. I came out here five or six times. Eventually, we did get everything that we needed just a little longer than we expected.
Any further discussion?
What was the motion again, Mr. Aaron?
A motion to approve this 1488 and for the city administrator to decent allocate funding and to locate the rest of the budget.
1488 not 15?
Yes.
So different.
Yes, sir.
Angela, are you in France that we could apply for?
Not quick enough to take care of this.
I mean, if we could be smaller one and then hold off on the much larger one.
Well, if it'd be my recommendation, if we've got the money budgeted for it, let's go ahead and use it and give us a period of waiting. We should be all over the city, not just the compliance. We didn't have that kind of money budgeted. I would say it was just the police department. But y'all were getting prepared knowing that a lot of this was going to have to be taken care of. You're more than halfway there now. And we can find some other funding somewhere else. I'm absolutely sure we can. Whether or not there's grant money, we can also look at, I mean, but it takes too, it takes too long. But there are tax notes that can be issued for something like this. And, you know, and you can do those and there are about a two-year process on those. We just pay them in two years, kind of like a loan or a tax note. It's not like CO. It's a little bit different. I mean, there's other ways of funding it. You've got the money there to do it now. And you might as well go ahead and take care of it now if that's what you choose to do. Now, whichever way you want to.
Much do we have budgeted for the camera?
$220,000. That's for your maintenance.
Did you tell me before that we also can utilize some of the court security?
Yes.
Camera?
Yes. I can use court security funds also because it'll be security of the court and the access for the network as far as the court ledger. So there's money in court security fund that can be used for it.
Is there any such thing as a retroactive grant?
I would recommend that you guys get it after the Royal Rock Band Initiative about 18 months ago, because they gave a lot of money away for Royal Cities for Rock Band to be able to bring in their own fire. Their ability to file twice a month for their area street. But again, I'll take it.
If you can get these, how would you do it?
It would be difficult, just to be honest. It would be an easy answer to say, let's just do PD because it's not that much, but it's going to, it's going to handicap for us the city. And then when we get to ESD and then they want to connect through the same side, they're going to be like, well, they can't have PD. And now we don't have any ESD or the fireside for ESD. And they're going to have to say basically the same thing. You may be going on sheriff's side of dispatch, but now you're going to have a dispatch ESD because it's separate. Because not on fire, I mean, it's seats, only on joint. I guess I would say on calls or most jurisdictional cases. Would be the only time that they ever cross these paths. So the easy answer is sure, you can segment it. But I think we're going to run into a problem in three to five weeks when we start testing their roster plays at ESD. And then we get there and we have this same problem with fire. We'll be right back here again. But we need to do the other side. Just trying to prevent, I think Patrick said that, so we didn't. It's not, it's not the best situation, but holding Band-Aid at once is going to give you guys the segmentation that you have to have. But it's also going to give the city a better use and operating, you know, environment for both fire, public works and everything else. So then when September gets here, we're not scrambling to go get microchats to the towers for water. We're not worried about first round of HDA or whatever, you know, fire needs or ESD dispatch. We just going to have these, government will start following it if we don't get something that's.
Can you hear it?
I haven't even looked at the numbers.
That'll be, that'll be a big check off.
Well, we better not be asking for it all at once, so.
Ms. Lee, look, you were saying you could stay out of court. Would that be the security fund or the technology fund?
You can do it either one. You can do it through, you can do it through either one. You can use the court technology and court security.
Yeah, because we were looking here on the revenues. It's already almost to what we're touching. So that's good. Like I said, for every.
Uh, thank you, Cam. I think I can use, can you, can you security also?
And court.
Because I know we used to upgrade some things over at the other city.
As much, yeah.
To upgrade on. And that's all you can spend it on. I mean, you know, there's not very much you can spend court technology, court security funds on, so you, you need some around the future. If you ever get out of it, you lose them because you're not using appropriate things.
Where's our technical support going to come from? Don?
We'll hang on. We're on both when it's complete. We've kind of been forgotten about what's kind of like where that line of the sand is where if he needs us, we're available. But we have to get it. You're basically an environmental manager managing right now. I'm not going to speak for him, but he's seen lots of walls as well, but he's, it's, it's a tough nut to come in.
Is warranty support going to go through as well?
Warranty, like on that actual equipment, his licensing, we handle that, but he's been managed to be taken over after it's initially installed and implemented. He can do that.
Well, we'll have Delta for three years, I guess. We'll wait for the two servers and.
Yes, you'll get first support plus under the TIPS contract. So you'll get the additional year anyway. By two, it's a pressure of our business. So that should be fair. Um, licensing, Microsoft, I think we only did one year server license or is that three years?
One year.
One year. So make sure you're just really your server licenses. We did them device cameras, right? That's right. You asked for the last camera. So we're good. Yeah. So we got one. And then over sixty-five, we'll do that anyway. Then we'll be break for a few breakers. So a lot of paper, we're just doing it for years.
So find out if you want to, we lost another dollar in years. They're not going to give you that plan. That's our additional cost to.
We can keep the tandem machines coming. Wooden stand machines. Wooden sever machines, you won't be worried about.
Ten and October twenty twenty-five, I believe is the last.
You could probably make a budget for next year.
It can be compliant if it's a standard, a foreign net. So you should still be compliant, just not very often.
Yeah.
What about this camera? Is it working or not?
It is working.
It's working. It's definitely, we might have to jack it because it's, it's its own, we, we would just segment that.
All the A R Ds are really separate. Any diaphragm city that we were done, we just do it separate from the record number. It's also easier to manage.
What's saying that again?
For nearly three hundred thousand dollars, do we get any other bids, Ms.?
Uh, well, I've had Don, the maxius, who called us over. Um, I haven't gone out for any other bids.
Is this who the county recommended them for the?
This is who's there. This is this day, the CAT system.
And we're providing it on a state contract and vehicle. So everything that is compliant.
I think it's, um, right now you're twelve percent under, um, cost on the, no, twelve percent under what TIPS says, which is like twenty-two percent under D I R and close to twenty-eight percent under by the way. Everything we've done throughout the county has been based on the county purchasing power, not just maybe. Same thing with credit points, revisiting, go by credit points, you know, for credit points, like the sheriff's alarm was last ninety-seven. They basically, we've done the entire county on the same registration for every O M. So everybody gets that price, no matter how little or how much they end up. But if you're going to work with it, I'm, I'm good with that.
How, how does that work with the bidding process? Is that an exception to the customer of the eye or is?
Yeah, so TIPS is a cooperative purchasing, um, I guess, is it cooperative? Just call Co-op. So you have TIPS, we use TIPS, we use I B O R or any other Co-ops, but it's a, it's, uh, an exception to competitive. Because we basically have to fit everything into this contract anyway. And then only those awarded are still all under the state's decency. Which has been most of my time during, you know, basis anyways. Yeah, the concept there, it's, it's already been paid. It's already been made. That's it.
Any other problem, Mike, is in this business, somebody's going to come in and they're going to say, well, you know, maybe we don't need to do this. Maybe we should do this instead. And I've said that kind of thing about.
I don't think you'd get apples to apples.
Yeah.
I was just asking if we got, you know, sometimes we don't have to go hop around.
Just a line.
Oh, my gosh, it killed me. Look at that.
Well, we'd much rather have been much less and then we could just live on the.
Oh, I'm sure. That's you.
Any other discussion?
So this one is the fourteen, sorry.
Fourteen eighty-eight.
Fourteen eighty-eight. This is the one we're doing.
That's one's on tape.
And you're ready to go.
No, we didn't. Sorry, you guys decide to go and go.
It's everything like this. Public Works, Fire Department, P D, everyone's on the main car. Everybody's.
We're not necessarily at any, any point. When she said to do them all, we did everything, cameras.
All the cameras replaced.
Correct.
And, and new cameras are all sites along with, um, electrical work, we see that out there. Gets everything compliant with both sheriff's office of Johnson County as well as the state.
And you just, and you said this would take us, this will get us through about ten years?
At least seven.
At least seven. So.
Then it's up to Don to make sure it's all operational, right?
So basically, we're playing catch up for where they should have been done about seven years ago, getting ready for these things. Um.
And I think, I think there's something else that, I, I mean, I make this recommendation to cities all over the state, all over the country more or less, but a lot in the state is when you get this type of solution done, then you schedule out your road mapping and a technology plan. So you don't end up having to do it all at once. You do it in pieces and you budget that piece every year, whether it's growth in storage or server upgrades. And you don't do server upgrades, firewall switches, access points, hardware shops, and cameras all at the same time. And just try to set up a technology point. And I think, uh, I think that that would be true proof for all of you to consider moving forward when you start talking about budget.
Aren't we on some kind of program with the wells and whatever already that's joined years ago? Something to make it easier for the computer?
You guys are going to say that? We're not going to say that, but we're not going to say that.
You all going to be moving?
We don't have to scan it.
Are you going to be moving?
Oh, we do.
Yeah, and then your bandwidth is, you'll definitely need to follow. And there's, there's some providers, fiber providers nearby. It's just, you're just going to get in a dope tease.
Like, can you give us service here or?
No, that's, it won't, it won't touch it.
No, it wins good.
Windstream, Windstream.
Who was the other archer there?
We have a couple, we have, we have a couple.
We're, we're, we're care agnostic. We don't care as long as they're going to give us a correct handout and give us multiple points of entry.
Windstream has a lot of complaints down there.
Always. It'll be a little different. Um, at this point, I'm not saying it's going to be severely any better, but when you run that through the channel side, because they know we're doing the project with the county, they typically, they typically design and provision it a little better. Because it has a lot more.
So the Ronaldis, our current bandwidth won't give it.
Oh, no.
So you need a plan in place now to get more bandwidth, not upgrade this and then hope we get more bandwidth because.
Well, I hope you can give a ten, ten line to us now if we wanted.
We have to pay for it.
Yeah, of course. And after, but if it comes down to something like that, then I'm sure they'd work this way.
I don't know what they, what did they propose?
Can you do it with ten, ten, ten lines?
So it was two hundred.
Yeah, we did two hundred. We recommended two hundred bucks.
Okay, now?
Yeah. Because you've got to remember, we're going to be doing a lot more download. There's just going to be a lot of upload. Mostly from the public safety side, fire and P D. There's going to be uploads.
Over the film and stuff.
Yeah, all that can't, information, but it's all going to the cloud because the D A's office can't be able to pull, uh, I made sure the data directly from the CAT system.
Or not. Oh, yeah.
I know.
So I had a quote for N H C was one of the aggregators as well as.
They're about eleven hundred bucks.
Windstream was thirteen twenty-five, uh, with a five hundred and twenty-five dollar one-time charge and N H C. Was eleven seventy-nine with no one-time charge. And that's it. Oh, thirteen fourteen, excuse me.
Because they're going to charge you for. Yeah.
Oh, that's that.
Yeah. That's, that's.
So we're thirteen, thirteen hundred.
That takes a bid?
No, not, that's not from us. That, you guys work out whatever carrier y'all want to go with. Again, we're not.
If you want two up and two down, please, two hundred up and two hundred down.
That, I think that would be sufficient for the city. That's if you're going to do the whole thing. P D would probably can get away with fifty, just P D. Just P D. But then again, now we're separating networks again and now you've got a piece on both sides. So your backup, if I get the P D between the two, it could cause some other issues.
So if we pay for all this and then for some reason, because Windstream doesn't have fire over here.
They do. We've already verified that. We've already verified.
Okay. Um, let's say they can't run it over here for some reason. Any of this useful? Let's say we can't upgrade our internet.
Well, then you just, if you can't, if you can't do any of this, is that what they're saying?
Like if we say let's do two hundred and eighty thousand, get all that done and then find out we can't upgrade our internet.
I've already verified that we can. We've already verified all of it. We had to do that before we even entertained the possibility of safe, secure networks and P D on this one. We, we couldn't do it otherwise. We just, we'd have to literally just say, we got to cut down the out of all the, it just doesn't exist.
Windstream is a hundred feet different is where, where those flights went. They'll go behind, they'll go behind our circle.
The five.
What's that? The high recording?
Yeah. I think they had, it was like twenty-four rail trains. So they were running four, so two primary and two redundant. So that's the requirement we always had on any carrier when we're going to do public safety. So they have to give us a backup pair. So they can't go sell out every year. And we ended up with one pair that goes bad and now I have no backup.
When that gas plant went in over on, close to the, kind of follows the town. Anyway, the gas plant went in out there on nine sixteen, I think it is. Windstream ran a fire line all the way up there, so.
Yes, I think they have a ninety-six train across from here all the way out. And then they have a hundred and twenty-eight train running north.
Not too many.
Twenty is back home. Yeah. Which is just strange to me, but.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, we, we had to go check that for sure. It wouldn't do us any good to come in and say, hey, let's segment P D to get it ready for SOA and then not be able to go on SOA. Because then that would be, that would be really poor planning on our part and, uh, and the county for that matter. And we've spent a year and a half planning this entire migration out.
About two seventy.
I'd love to say yes, but I didn't put names together, so I don't know.
But you're on the person, guys.
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
So if we cut out the cameras, it goes out on twenty-three thousand dollars. I know we need cameras. But that would put us down into our budget. We'll load it. Why are the cameras going to cost so much?
It's not just cameras. It's cameras, Microsoft licensing and air fiber.
We'll use the can.
Can do this. So. Project, and we're configuring the whole network. That includes not only the physical hardware, but also the labor it's involved.
Because on this group total, where it's at, it's. Nine twenty-four, thirty, thirty-two, it brings out to a hundred and twenty-three thousand. And the service is.
For a hundred and twenty-three thousand for the hardware. But that doesn't include the ones that are required anyways. You can't eliminate all the cameras because we have some property P D, which we had.
We go back to the P D load.
So the P D load, that's the route and I'll just do it that way and eliminate the rest. But then again, I might have to ride back there in three weeks when we test the E S D, then it's a side of this area. Again, to us, it, it's, it's not, we, we don't, we don't have a favorite or a better position to begin. We just say, this is, this is what we know and this is the information we can give you. And whether you choose to do it, it's entirely up to you.
What brand are the cameras?
For cloud. It was that or Axis. And Axis was the only other one that we could use. And right now they're about a hundred and twenty-eight days out lead time. And they're not going to make ninety percent of their qualifications that have to be done by the summer. So I didn't even want to go down that path. And it would save you about one percent, which wasn't worth it.
What's the factor? What do you know this camera?
It's living lifetime. So any, yeah, it's, if the camera goes bad, we ship it back, they are there. So it's the licensing is what you're really banking for.
And verify your licensing on there. So it wouldn't be licensed fees on cameras for violation.
Which is also maybe why the camera costs looks so much because you do have licensing for five years. We tried to match the same, uh, term on most of what we had against what the SOA licensing number was because you guys remember, SOA said the county pays on board in year one and then you pick that year two. So that would put you at four years. So you would have your renewal for SOA in a single year. And your cameras and any other additional licensing would be after that. So they aren't in the same year. We, we've had to do that in a lot of cities because they're like, okay, if I'm planning for me to pick up my main stream or SOA license, I want it to go to that fourth year, let's say. So all the other things that you have to pay for, you don't want to be in that fourth year. So we've either done five or thirty, but the thirty wasn't, if camera wise, it didn't save you enough money to do thirty.
So without camera mapping, where, where are all these multisubzero cameras going to go?
So several, I don't know, water treatment. Um, we have some at P D that requested, um, some outside the building here. We have some at PD that requested, some outside the building here. And then a couple at some of the larger sites.
And the reason that you do that is because you can pay one license for the camera, that's one of the years, but paying for a single license for four cameras, you just saved you one money.
Stevie, you may be able to answer this. For the least part, you're planning to get a home net security for those cameras.
So did you use it?
Yeah, so about all those cameras down here.
The old ones?
Long before I got the chance to try them.
Call for a vote? Hi.
Hi. Who was your second? I don't have.
I have a motion. That, that, the council person will bring in for the motion, council number my second.
Sorry, I just wanted to check out.
I'm sorry, rabbit. You want you to pass this five to zero to approve agenda ID, bid number one four eight eight for two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-one cents. Seventy-four.
Thank you all very much.
We're moving on to that, especially the big non-land use contract for IT services with Axios Group.
So you have the, you should have the contract in your council that was sent in there. They were still reviewing this late September. And this is the contract for IT services with Axios Group. So after we were contacted by Jeff with Toto in regards to the police and all the information that we talked about earlier. I had already contacted Don Reeves with Axios Group and with, and Lant with CDI, and asked for information for services. And he even spoke with Toto about providing IT services for us. No offense, because I know y'all are really busy. But Toto was kind of over our budget of what I was looking at the cost, and CDI really didn't respond a whole lot to me. We talked a little bit back and forth about the services. But in the end, Don has been helping the city and working with Toto to procure our antivirus software that had expired and just on top of everything else being open and it had no antivirus. He's installed that A D on all city computers, as well as your own computers. Some of you have met him, he's done some work on our lower units. And I've worked with Don over the years at several different cities, he's C G certified, and he's helped a lot of cities that I've worked in, in the past. And so with that said, you've got the contract in front of you for the professional services that I think that we need at this point. If we're going to go with that kind of money and put this kind of infrastructure in, we need to have someone who can be on top of that, and that can keep us in C G compliance. So when we do get ready for these audits, we'll have someone that can be able to do that for us with the police department. The Axios cameras, he has a lot of experience with. The Axios in-car cameras, he has a lot of experience with, with the other cities that he's worked with. Inco, I call him name code guru, but he's worked with me on several projects within Coe at different cities. So that's why I actually reached out to him because of his experience and his work working with cities of, you know, that I've been in, in my past. So with that said, he's here now, some of you have met him, but he's here to answer any questions you may have.
Charles, you know about Axios? How can I help?
Uh, what's your staff?
The way Axios was structured when I started, it's gotten me years ago, that's why I have four leather hair. The idea was not to staff up with a bunch of employees, we have a team of licensed professionals. If you were to total our years of experience, can Doug, Don, Charles, myself, it's a lot. So personal staff, I am the point person, and then I'll, I'll guide whatever technology is needed, whatever problem presented with it.
Services are twenty-four seven, maybe sixty-five at this point.
It's been that way for thirty years.
Who is it that keeps up with the latest technology from Microsoft and Tech and Tech?
Oh, that's one, actually Charles, Charles Calhoun, he's fully certified, he's very plugged in, the law is unified and that.
I like the initial cycle of the year. It looks like you might have missed the service twenty nineteen, I guess.
No, no, it's sort of twenty nineteen, man, but that's a D C twenty nineteen. Yeah, then you guess in twenty twelve was an active day, so if you're.
We're not keeping that.
You know, Axios was, the IT side of this is academic, you do your studies, and you know what you don't. The work that goes into supporting the state or any customer is the customer service, and that's what I've built my reputation on, being available.
Who does your not found work?
I'm twenty-four seven, I'm this a local town, a lot of S O's, P D's, probation offices.
How many companies, how many government institutes do you service?
Well, I've been bearing down, again, I had a full head of hair. Really, I came here because I have such high regard for Angie, and she said that she needed another pair of eyes for this project. I was here, and I can see the city does have the need. The, the real trick is, working with Toto is going to be interesting, it's a collaboration. Of what they're putting in, a lot of what Jeff and Patrick have shared with me and their approach to this is in, is in alignment with my thoughts, and that is that the equipment, the servers, the design, it all belongs to the city. It's not, it's not Toto's, it's not mine, and the city should guide it. My role is clear communication, development, migration process, so we can be as disruptive as little as possible. And to plan for future implementation, make sure, this is a big thing, I see it lost a lot, is making sure the city gets an eye on the hardware they bought. Being, cutting edge is expensive, I refer to it as bleeding edge, and you're just rotating hardware in, and not always for good reason. So I think that's where my experience can help out.
Was it you that recommended before in our offices, or is that you?
I've been on, I'm sorry, I'm been on for a minute, I think Toto is good, and I've talked with a fellow engineer, Eric, good guy. He had a lot of light, the idea of segmenting your network, V LANs, Patrick brought it up earlier, like this camera we were concerned about. We just put it on a different, I think maybe a different segment, a segment, it's the internet only access, it doesn't have any access back to any of the city private network. And it's done, we really don't have to concern ourselves. Also, it's a vendor come in, you ain't even got access on their equipment here in the desk, and we don't have to really concern ourselves about it.
And I'm going to ask you, you said you, you serviced, I forgot already.
Over the years or currently?
Sure.
Currently, uh, uh, well, well, currently, cities, none. I, um.
Maybe businesses then?
Yes, I mean, over the years, god, they, the list is long, Joshua, well, I'm sorry, City of Crowley is still an Axios customer. We put their first network here, so we've been at this a while.
You do, still go to Hanson Park?
No, no, they decided to go with MSP here within the last month, which is fine, it's all good. There is a difference between what MSPs can provide and what Axios can provide, and that is going to be the one-to-one technical self-help solution. This afternoon, I took the call from Chief, and within ten minutes, we had his phone, so he's on his way. So there isn't a, there isn't a ticket, ticket, send an email out, and go through that process. We can, we can structure our way, our organization that way, but I personally enjoy the personal contact between knowing my customers' network. And that's the key, and the call is made, the dialogue will tell me where the problem exists and how to approach it, as opposed to having to discover the network yourself, or take this over. Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir, the rates are really fat of those guys.
I've been at this a while, so if this isn't, uh, you know.
Hundred dollars an hour for on-site, seventy fifteen, seventy five an hour, seventy five, that's just not bad for this industry. I was an ass player this issue.
Yeah. Axios says over the years, I can give the long list of cities, Joshua, Manola, Cook County, Wise County, probation officers, credit unions, Tarrant County is credit union is one of our biggest customers. We've got a citywide network we support, city Tarrant Plaza right across from you. I'm just not a money grab guy, my energy comes from providing the service, I think that's why Andy and I get along. If she has a problem, I kind of get jazzed on fixing it, and then I'm out of the way, I have to do my thing. I, I, Don's doing fine. Thank you for your turn, but Don's doing all right, that's what I'm not doing IT. I hold my horses and doggy, doing my thing, marking stalls. And anyone wants to mark a stall, you're welcome to come out.
And to be quite honest with you, I'd like, I'd love you to know that once I met with Toto, I really needed someone that I could trust, that I could go to and say, no.
No.
Because I can't read it, I can read it, but I don't know what means. I had to have somebody I could trust, and when I found out there were loopholes everywhere, that our, our infrastructure was in the shape it was, and that there was accessible points, I had to have somebody I could trust. Now, some may say that I bring, that I've brought a lot of people over from Hanson Park, it's not just Hanson Park. I've been in this business here for forty years, and I've worked with many, many different people, and been really fortunate to get to meet people that have provided professional services throughout the cities that I've worked at. And so I just think that's a blessing for me to be able to contact technology partners and say, here, we can do this, we, we could respond to this R F Q. You know, auditors, people that I've just worked with in the past. Some may like it, some may not, but it's never been that, why not be saying there's never been a problem with it?
Right.
So, yeah, we've known each other a really long time, way back in the Crowley days, but.
Well, benefits a city.
I gotta have somebody I can trust.
It benefits a city, we came with acknowledge.
But.
Did you know this?
No, it's like I, I explained.
Oh, exactly.
Oh, sorry. You look like you're looking at your eyes. And I was like, it's not, this, this is not. Which one of our associations did you?
I'm going to make a motion to approve a contract for Axios Group.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Any further discussion?
What was the second?
Be mayor pro temp. I heard mayor pro temp, he's on one of those, how about that? Any further discussion? The motion from Councilmember Herbert on the second, from Representative Hattipus, to approve ID and to approve the contract with Axios Group.
IMF.
I'm sorry, IMF, correction. Any further discussion? Out there.
Hi.
Motion passes five zero. Will we move back to right now? Discuss the big cost of action about the resolution number R zero two dash two zero two four dash zero five, providing rolling fund up and proceeds for the city council. As was stated previously, this I was brought back to the table the last week, we postponed it to this week because of the late time we received it. But nothing has changed from the previous meeting, just in the top.
I got a question about the two point eleven, Councilmember attended, it says nothing about people that, it says you, if you're sick, you're okay, if you got to work, or if you have a obligation you can't get out of. I don't see anything about that on, as being an issue, absence.
The, being ill or steroided and statin.
Yep.
Uh, as far as not being able to make it for other appointments, it would be presented to the council for an excuse. So there's not going to be anything that's going to have a massive list of all possible excuses.
Sure. I just didn't, I have to work, so I didn't want it, because I didn't want to be here for some reason at all, like I did, I choose that, and I'm playing with volume, but I got that. Or can't record, what do I have?
So I know most of this follows government code, can we add something like that into it, so that those on the houses we work?
Is like a general reference to the local government code?
Well, no, just like, say, rather as organized, and you can't make it, and I'll give them excuse absence rather than work. The next couple of months, if I go out on the train, that's an excuse absence this time of year, rather than just having them excuse us, because we, we might not be able to make a couple meetings, and then all of a sudden, you take off council.
But correct me if I'm wrong, the local government code allows the council to approve a previous, you don't have to approve prior to missing, they can approve it retroactively also.
Is it an automatic kick, or is it a vote by the council?
It's, it's three consecutive misses. The paperwork is done to question one and see is vacated, but it's all. The paperwork is done to question one and see is vacated, but it's ultimately loaded on by the council. Correct.
That's right.
Have we ever been there with a councilor? Say, wow?
Yes.
So this time, when you, behind the scenes of the meeting, he's going to explain to you, you know, why you must take an excuse. Let's say, this wise has a late night at work, or has a house in his city. And you should have to say, "Oh, I was at a little house, and I didn't have enough meat." Where it should be excused.
Is that a statement here? Is there anything that I know about?
How would we address that?
Yeah, so this is what, uh, local government says. If a member of the governing body is absent for three regular consecutive meetings, the member's office is considered vacant plus the number of sick, or has first obtained a leave of absence for the regular meeting. In addition to an absence described by a subsection meeting, it's one inch short. A member of the governing body is also considered absent for the purpose of the subsection. The member is not present at the adjournment of the meeting, which upon is established unless the member is first allowed to recall that he knows of the member's subject. So, if the process here is spelled out, maybe you create a process for understanding. How do you, can you get your absence approved beforehand? This is a question, right? Do you have any other questions?
That's half, the other half is, if you're going to retroactively, is it always specific to the agenda items? Or how, how, I would say for the one that he's in and ratify the absence.
For one? Or three?
Three and second. Like, this is, this is your policy?
I don't know why they got to make it so hard. It seems like if someone's handy out, I'll say, "Hey, I'm out, okay." And then if it turns out to be a hostile situation, then you owe it then.
I think that's what, we're trying to close that gap so that doesn't be a challenge to say, hey, you can necessary. Because I know when we go downtown, if it's, I have meetings on the ground twenty-four hours a night in my call. So I don't have time to come up between before the council and say, can I get permission to miss or get an excuse absences? I'm going to do everything I can to be here, but, I mean, my, my lobby, they're councilors.
Well, they're three is statute, I think.
Well, I know, I think, so that they don't have...
That's for unexcused absence.
Right.
So, I think your question is, who basically approve absences? How do you know if it's an excuse?
Okay.
The statute says if you're not sick, then it's an excuse.
Sick is one. It says unless the member is sick or has first obtained a leave of absence.
So then we can call the mayor and say, "We have..."
Yeah, so, so I think it's just a question there also, who do you want to have the power to approve absences? So then, if that's the question, then we just need to add it to your policy.
I don't have to be the entire council have that, just for that.
Yeah, I see.
Here, does it not excuse? Well, it's like, it's an excuse. I'm saying you can do that, but if...
Listen, so you have to do that after the absence because you will be able to meet as a government.
Yeah, that's for myself, I have one contact C unit that will call under this, uh...
Is that appropriate? I mean, maybe, some, yeah, some cities will do city secretary. Because she puts together, you don't have agendas, so she, she usually, trying to figure out if this country's long present is an absence or not.
If she doesn't have it.
Well, there's got to be a way, whether it's, whether it's, whether it's the mayor's position that the council, you know...
Get over it.
If we come into that hospital, see, and then the council can say, well, I don't need a agenda. So I have to try to write it and make it right.
Yep.
But whoever makes it easiest, I think, upfront.
Yeah.
So say, second carry, can you do that?
Sure, we, we made it, the mayor's position, and then just override by the council. As council, so that's a favor.
You're right. Let me just go to the board and...
I've got a PD.
That's sixty-two dollars, six...
Yeah, it is, that is, yes.
There, there, he knows all of it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, uh, you missed because of the reason, whatever that could be, you're not coming for it. Now, if you don't miss, if you miss, you don't tell anybody and you show up next week without any power of, uh, excuse or whatever, that that would be an excuse absence.
So why can't we just change the policy to, she could wear that excuse absence in the public way, if she doesn't hire us?
Yep.
Then, I mean, there's going to be one of those.
We're always going to create one message.
Well, the next message is someone's going to just quit, it's not even retired, and say, "Well, I excuse absence, so if you guys aren't going to work." I mean, in a hospice situation. Well, that makes it too, too low for that substance, and then we had a problem.
I think it's still best to have one person who will have to choose this and not try to wipe out all the other segments.
Especially with vision override laws, I think. You make that become harder to do.
Yeah, so this is a resolution, and it's just a policy council can, without any resolutions, can change policy number.
So then just give direction to staff to put that section in there for...
Can we have a motion to lay their standard? Or no?
Yes, yeah, you can, you, um, agree with the changes with the...
Before you get there, is there other issues? Is there other possible issues?
I had a question on, uh, two, six B. On the attorney approvals of the agendas, because they were probably that level too. Um, and I expect that they ever had that review, but it's happened for less than a... Agenda items are requested or subject to review and or revision by the city attorney for the lines of the opening meetings. Only the opening meetings, actually, that's what we're saying, that's two, six Bs, per version of the...
Two sixteen?
Two, two, six, probably, two, two point six.
Two point sixteen.
Oh, two point six.
Three, four.
Last sentence. Hey, my, this is two. Because it wasn't very long ago where we had the city attorney who basically just killed the agenda items because she wanted. Not because of any, you know, reasonable, um... Reason. So is this, is this just saying that you're just going to review them? Because you never know, like, some other people will get up here and fire you guys, and I was a moron. So, are we thinking that this is... Yep. Is this just open meetings act that is, that you're not, I mean, is this restricted to the open meetings act? How can it, is it possible for it to be abused or? I guess, that's really silly questions. But you know what I mean, um...
Yeah, I, I really never have been either way. I mean, this is me personally, as, as to the agenda, you all will put on there.
I know.
I mean, we've seen some that, sometimes you'll get some that are thought, but they're not really succinct. And so, we will revise those just so that it's, it's compliant with the open meetings act. But, um, and other times when you have to amend it to sh, to show that maybe there's a public interest required. So there's other statutory provisions that requires some specific language. So you'll have a motion to, yeah, what instances that do require special language. So, it's not just for compliance with open meetings act, but, um, and Texas law.
You're like, this is the one for the attorney, at that time, dealing with anybody in here that didn't have a, explosive. Uh, if, if, if one of us or a council member puts an item out, it needs to be put on the agenda. That can be, like you said, rewarded because of open meetings or to put the same item, it can be worked that way. We can't, I don't want to have where your thoughts, your ideals cannot be placed on the agenda like they've been before.
That's, that's, now, and that actually brings up a good point. I mean, there are some items that are not right for the agenda. And so usually we'll, we'll reach out to you if that's the case and discuss it with you. For example, for to discuss, uh, a matter that, um, is pending litigation. So we can talk about how that goes on the language that you, you use, or whether Matt's Parker put that on. Would that make sense?
Sure.
Because that would be conversation with the person who's...
Oh, yeah.
Was the add-on.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're not, yeah, there's no, there's no Q and X.
I did have a question, uh, three point two on B. Business is old. What is the statute? Because it's wanting us to list attorney, whether it's business to be on, or whether it is. Because it says our partnerships, I mean, LLCs, Forbes, us and our spouses. Why is that relevant to it?
Are you like that three point two?
Three point two on the mandates, uh-huh.
Yeah, so the first one, A, is just, uh, consists of state law.
That's that form, or you have, or you have to sign off, and that's all that is.
I also have, and, and there's also some ethics, uh... Ethics commission forms, which might have to go up.
I don't recall the ethics commission forms, because I have an LLC. So, I think about this, I should have filed with...
Are we asking about B?
Yeah. This is, if you're doing business with your companies, correct? I think...
Well, this assumes you're doing business with a company, not that you have this business.
Yeah, you have to do your business and disclose it.
I'm sorry.
It's just listed on your rule for conduct, that conduct is indicated, and we have to file our, we have to follow our city, it's not saying...
Yes, it's all council, and we shall file.
Yeah.
The city annual performance committees, and then vehicles between the council and your husband or spouse. So if it's the, like, mine, LLC, if you're LLC, if you're LLC.
Sounds like...
So why is that relevant to the city? Why do we have to follow our business stuff?
Yeah, so...
We're just...
Yeah, I want to address this now, I would say straight to you.
Yeah.
You're going to have, you're going to have some, um, obligation to disclose, understand that, but this is, is a very broad...
Straight to you.
You know, just we're true, we've got to make the motion to describe it.
Making the whole goal, with two, appointing that person as the recruitment official.
Right.
But what's that person?
We've made a study, five...
We have a major mention.
Okay.
Nobody, no, there's no motion.
You can go up and enter that.
I'm trying.
Well, the mayor can make it.
No.
No, the mayor can't.
I cannot make it, because I'm not, I'm not going to remember. What was that? I have some guests.
I was, uh, also on... Two, or, sorry, two point one five, B one, talk about pet park capacity, all that, that we posted, um, last, the public.
I'm asking, the current large should verify our previous large chief's number, but yes, we have.
So, yeah, I was going to say, so, yeah, the green capacity, um, the rules for the public, the meeting, uh, yeah, stuff you don't have in here, all that you supposed to, so they're where? Does it make...
Sure, my question, I'm figuring out.
Is it? Is that how they look?
This way.
Where we at?
This one. E one.
So this has come up before when we asked presenting all of these. What are we going to do if we need higher capacity? I mean, once you have a, like, we didn't have a separate meeting.
We can take that, that television that broadcasts on, and string it right out there and see if there's any room out there.
We're not going to carry it out there.
No, but we'd have to, we could get some public chairs or whatever. I've done that in other cities where we put it in the lobby. And provide a place for them. And if it's stringy, you can even put them in a bigger area, but we had to, uh, a fire station, you know, and string it down there.
We do what we can, but we had capacity, and we're out of chairs, and we just can't buy chairs for every possible number that shows up.
This cabinet, you would say.
Is there?
The one, was it?
Yeah, that's what I'm...
Chairs, isn't that?
They'll see ADA compliance or not having chairs, so we're not going to need that here.
There's chairs all over here.
In the context of, uh, I've been helping you.
Well, like, if, let's say, we're just passing here, and we have our busy area ready for you.
Yep.
If you don't have chairs, but say someone needs a chair, are we going to need an ADA compliance?
Yeah, so there's a provision of the main act that addresses ADA compliance. Um, I don't know if anyone's ever made their request, but they can make their request.
You know, we see four chairs, and we're moving to another area, and they don't have chairs, and we still have ADA compliance.
I hope that someone will make room for people who have disabilities to rest it down in their home, so. If they're just going to request reasonable accommodations at the moment, I hope they're...
Like I said, there's, I mean, we can, staff can make sure they're accommodated if it's one person that's needing ADA compliance. Plenty of chairs around here. I've got a bunch of chairs back in the back for you to move out, for anybody that would need that.
I have a question on four one, that's the... We need that with our public center.
Oh, my God.
Four point one?
Yes, please. Four one one, that'd be, so, so, two.
E, is it ever, E, E, which constructs, uh, place, and, 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 is it ever actually applied?
Probably.
I've always wondered the same thing, or is it more statute, sorry? And since your business appeared in chapter two, dark man, discipline. It was, make your business, so you, like, you're writing on a, or... Is that right?
Well, this is, uh... Yeah, so just, we didn't like it, and this is something the resolution, uh, needs to be, I'll be...
I mean, with this, is this a...
I think it'll be whatever is in the resolution. So if councilor, we have to, we got that.
How's that?
If it, if it requires a resolution, it'll have to be on the agenda as, as an item for discussion and action.
It's how we do that, unless it, like, something that gets opened up. Here's mine, here, guys. Do I ask for a janitor for six...
Put her, put, put her on the agenda. And then, next meeting, have your resolution ready and let everyone go on.
This sounds scary, okay? You guys, what else does this sound like?
Yeah, I mean, now, now we have a process, if that's, if that's what you want to do.
So it's, so it's like a, basically, for, yeah. I don't like what she says, or I want to stop... I don't like what she says, or I don't like some stuff that's my procedure. I don't see what we're, what, whether the outcomes of us totally censoring.
Yeah, that's, what's the outcome, what is the result?
Like, have you ever done, you're a part of the state, you're in the, probably a.
Yeah, so the federal government does it. I think the House and the Senate will have sanctioning procedures. Understand that there are bands, folks to have, and censor.
If you can, you did the gathering, you can censor, I've heard of that for sure.
So, I mean, it's not, it's not unheard of in, you know, our government wants to see that to happen, so. And what is the result? Nothing.
Like, I feel like this is just a, like, if I'm learning a bit risky, then I'm a censor.
But it takes a, it takes, that paragraph, your reading says, it takes a vote in the council to even put it on for his center here.
Yeah, but you couldn't on me. Misty said, it's just a deep egg. Like, I don't like totally stop, it's, it's a.
But that's.
Does that you, does it have to be?
This, no, I mean, these are your rules. You know, we can bring these back and we can. The device can make some of your comments, I mean. These are your rules and procedures, so if you wanna make our work in the center, you can do that, I mean, if you wanna keep this process, that's up to you.
Well, but then, how can we actually take, if you felt like we needed to dispossess our members? Kind of, just mean like no action or totally more no action?
Yeah, it's just. So is it kinda like what we did to the ex-mayor or re-ear?
No, kind of, yeah.
Is that, I, but this is.
Doesn't mean anything, it's just a, a vote of. Disempowerment.
But it's not, if you read it, I mean, I did not write this, this is, I think about the sixth time this document's due in the one county. Uh, it, it says violation of rules. Now, I'm sorry, but I don't think, may not like it, but councilman regard would have said it's a violation of any rule and any conduct.
And you're also.
All right, so is A, does A presuppose, or is A, is C inclusive of A? In other words, the violation of a rule requires holding a hearing? Or, yeah, is that the first step?
You have to.
That was it? Okay, so you don't even get to C until A and until A is there.
Right, but what, what, I was like, what does C mean? What does that mean?
What do you mean, A?
Right.
So you can't even get there before A, so I think that just kind of knocks out, oh, hey, I'm gonna put this on the agenda. Because first, the majority must vote to hold a hearing. I think the, there's checks and balances here. Remember, you gotta.
No, you, you have a process, and there's definitely a, a filter before you get to that point where you're ready to censor someone.
But it's still gonna have to be a leader for us to sort of. So a person's name is still going down there, first, they're gonna talk about that, you know, and not consider it like, I didn't like what you are for this.
Yeah, I mean, that's council, you do that kind of thing all the time, it just depends on if you're aligned or if you're, if you're not, or, I mean, sometimes you can get volatile. You know, so, but again, these are your rules, so you can add whatever additional, I call the filter, you know, steps, and the processes you wanna take. You, you would be putting on the record the majority vote of the council, saying, like, leave it.
We threw that, so we go talk about some shit. I read that. Provisions three point three in the past is, uh, in the past, it, it was a zoning change or something like that close to, uh, to some of those properties. We couldn't, we couldn't think about it, is that in here, is that what this is talking about, and why can't? It is not, it's not your particular piece of property you're talking about, why can't we vote and discuss it?
Yeah.
Well, Michael, well, you know, we have a, we have a petition, asked for, uh, majority to pass a zoning change, and it was shut down. Why, I don't understand why that happened, I don't, I don't make sure, there's, there's no reason that happened. I mean, if it's your own property, yes, you may not, you shouldn't maybe vote on it, if it's next door to your property or walk away, you should be able to vote on it.
Where does it say joining?
I'm asking enough what this means.
Oh, sorry, D, the bottom one, I don't, I think it says specific ownership of property or, or part of the property.
As an operator, I wanna make sure that's what it means.
D.
But I believe.
Yeah.
My. Reason of it, what was, shouldn't have happened.
Yes, it's ownership of an interest. So sometimes there's gonna be some state, state law conflicts, and ones you have to address as, as they come up.
I was damned, it was old and I was, you know, I'm on this council, so I didn't know better, I should have. Said, no.
I agree.
I had multiple DAs and other counties, ADAs, I don't need to, your house office, all twenty, our. But there's nothing I can do about it.
I'm saying, I just wanna make sure we don't put this, don't put this up there in here. But as long as it, this says it's your property or your business, you have to include yourself, but if it's next door to whoever, then you do okay.
I'll have the motion, but I'm gonna need, before we make the motion, is to, the council wants to appoint as.
Personal opinion of the D to, uh, Anthony New.
Okay, city administrator or mayor.
Hey, I just, I, I consider you both of, cause you may be out yourself for a couple days, you may be out, but you said to both of you, discover, one of you will be able to say what's going on. But my, I gotta get it, cause all of that. Time goes, yes. And then with an override.
Cause I'm gonna make the motion, but P T. So I'm gonna make the motion to approve the resolution R dash oh two, dash two oh two four, dash four five, with the changes of striking three point two point D.
Yes.
And then. And then adding the city administrator and the mayor as the contact if we have to be absent during the work, or missing.
Missing.
Uh, only two, and two point six B, from state law. For compliance with the main, main act, main law. Two point six B.
Let's see that with the execution that we had last time. We can't put your eye on the agenda to remove the city attorney, because that's against the law.
Surprised, maybe one.
We're gonna add two point six B, um, the agenda of course is B tag plus state law.
The question from councilman Rodriguez, and a second from councilman Mize to approve resolution under R two two dash two zero two four, dash zero five. With the corrections of striking three point two point D. Adding the city administrator and mayor as the proven personnel for this meeting, and adding on two point six B. Adding plus state law and the sentence. Is there any further discussion?
Can you talk, stop? Cause I'm not.
None.
We're just gonna vote.
Sorry.
Well, that's, that wasn't exactly one of the reasons that was provided by former D for striking A. And then I would kill, why I didn't want to have it, then land, I, whatever, for crap. Just because the email said, well, give it to the city attorney, city attorney, city, it's against the law.
So this process, so that, that's, that's just reviewing agenda, right?
I, I, I just, you know, you can't, I can't, I know I can't. Write out every single instance of this, so.
If, if hopefully, if I have that case, uh.
Yeah.
Put me on the agenda.
Well, sir.
Yes. Give whatever you want.
Is there any further discussion?
Maybe one.
All right, sir.
Maybe one.
For a minute later.
Yeah.
Hey, boy.
Yeah. I don't want any of our, our E campers, uh, agenda spots, or I haven't seen it, or moved over. Serious. I understand if we put something on, talk to you, talk to Angie, I just, where we're at is, that's fine, I've not done that. But I don't want anyone arbitrarily having the authority to remove or not add an agenda without diversity, to get, and agree with the, uh, person that they're known by. There is no provision or override of published agenda, correctly? No provision on state law. So in that situation, it's, it's just an extraordinary situation that probably, hopefully doesn't happen all that often, but hostile environments, it can. And there's just nothing you can do off there.
Don't write the published agenda. Yes, to make a change in the agenda, the publisher is seventy-two hours out for a procedure meeting, if you still attend, uh.
You could, yeah, if you're within the publishing time guidelines, right, if the hostile environment is set so that it's five o'clock on this day, and the, and the hostile entities, publisher, five o'clock, you're done. You can't have it on the agenda for that, I believe, that's what was happening to the council back in the.
And you fired those people.
Was that?
I said, then you would fire.
You couldn't, you couldn't fire them, cause they took it off the agenda, oh, here, this, this agenda, I'm gonna fire them, it's a, they gotta go, they do.
Still, what's your board?
Yeah.
I can't get it off.
Since there's a public office, what do we do if it does happen? We can sit here and talk about what we're gonna do, but say you go somewhere, you do them, and I'll put on there, what happens?
I don't know what can be done in that instance.
Well, if it's the city secretary or the city administrator, you make, uh, the next meeting, you make a meeting, and since they serve the pleasure of the council, they don't serve anymore.
Yeah, they can get on the agenda.
Where's, how many years city attorney?
So, there's a question here, the, the, count, if everything, the council member requests to be on the agenda, it just automatically goes, or there's no vetting process through the administrator for more research? Or if, what we were saying earlier, flows with something that might be on the next agenda? I mean, who has that authority to, day and night, it's gonna be on this specific agenda? See what I'm saying?
Yeah, so there's, so there's nothing here about removing items off the agenda, right? Um, I mean, some of that will come down to managing the meeting and also what is most important, and that's why I have a city administrator. And there's some items that should never be on the agenda, and so if you were to ask, um, I'd like an agenda item to put Misty's social security number on your agenda, I mean, that would never be permissible, so it can't be an absolute, that would be an item that would not go on the agenda.
So that's the question, is all of our requests not, have to be invented, offer to go on to the?
Yes, and if you don't have what you're doing, then you have the power.
You win, can you know the agenda?
With the exception of, it being ordinance with the timeline statute.
That's right.
Which is where, whoever the current attorney is.
And this language says, agenda item requests are subject to review and revision by the city attorney for complacency, means that, state law.
Basically, you do not, we should go on there, you're gonna make sure it's up to, you know, for everybody. So we're arguing what ifs, I did, I stepped here for three years, you don't, I did. But we can hammer what ifs.
I can talk about. You can do any way to really solve that problem.
I think you all had solved that before.
You solved it, will you? I'm gonna tell him this, uh.
Any further discussion?
Two point one eight, C.
Two point one eight?
Two point one eight, C. Is the reverse also true now?
Is the law?
The reverse also true.
I guess, Mary. Easy word says, is it in the employee handbook that they won't criticize select officials or anything they're in?
Public.
Whenever you are?
Two point one eight, C.
This is, oh, okay, I'm, I'm a, I'm a. I think there's, there's some verbiage in the upcoming personal manual that talks about this. Um, and it's under a ethical part. And, yeah, and I know it is, I don't know what section it is, but I know it is because it was placed in several different cities about the same thing.
And the reason I ask is because there is one audio recording that specifically people from my church came here because of a vicious and malicious attack. I don't know, and I didn't know about it until later, couldn't have objected at the time. But I don't know that I could really comply with that, but I find, again, I'm probably gonna be a little more vocal. What is, is this a censure, I don't know, is this just equity?
You can, um, for all of the, the public for.
Oh, absolutely. If this individual or whoever it is wants to be, wants to go public, which is, then Orwell said, sometimes you gotta fight. Sometimes when you fight, you get dirty.
So I guess the question being the, if councilmember Mize posts something on her Facebook page on a. on a employee. Does the council rules apply in that aspect?
I think with the process that you have for sanctioning, I think that if you're looking at, on a case by case basis, the comment, I doubt that you're gonna have a super majority that want to go after the council member for that, that comment. Just depending on the facts. In fact, I should agree just that it wants the criticism. And I don't think you're gonna have a super majority that says, yeah, you are. And, and these are shoulds. Right, the language is should. So, should is?
Yeah, should, not shall.
Should, not shall.
So how does that play into freedom of speech?
I don't know. So I'd say they don't want to say a person or anything. So these are, these are conceptual, right? I mean, this is, these are higher standards for, uh, your actions. It's raising the bar on the program.
And they're hard to beat, then.
And they're, and they're hard to beat, then.
But when you have what?
Even, and, and, well, I mean, I'll give you some context, you know, though, probably in the next five years or so, you get your own role. And most every single own role charter has these provisions in it. And the reason for that is because you have a city administrator and you don't need a, a council standing up and telling the city administrators to discipline things off the phone. And you also don't need council members going back and directing staff, telling them where to go, what to do every day. Because it conflicts with the powers that you have and that are set up in your charter. So you're gonna have, you're gonna have your executive, you're gonna have your judicial, you're gonna have your, you know, legislative body, that's the council. And your city secretary and your attorney. And that needs to be, everyone will have to have their own role, roles. And so that's what most charters will, will establish, like.
That's all I had.
Interesting. Councilmember Mize replied?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion, S five zero, for approving Resolution R zero two dash two zero two four dash four five. While striking three point two point B and adding the city district and mayor's approving person for this meeting. And on two point six B, adding state law at the end. Going on to either C, discussion of possible action of third party investigation, audio recordings pertaining to the Dallas Police Department. Mr. Cooper, come speak on this item.
Appreciate it, Mayor, counsel. Mayor, thank you very much. Ma'am. But during, uh, killing it, thank you. Um, I've been encouraging you here since, um, talking about the problems with the police department. All of you who decided to run, were likely to do of the turmoil, trials and challenges the city's facing. You, you chose to do this job, they're hard, they're not fun. I get it, I don't envy you, I would not want to do it if you had to, would not, would not want to do it. Um, sunlight is the best disinfectant. It cleans substances, kills microorganisms, virus, fungi, bacteria. It sterilizes, it makes pure. Sunlight disinfects. On the flip side, time is a great antiseptic. Time equals loss of sensation, loss of awareness, loss of feeling. The amount of it that has passed has effectively known everyone and created an environment where everyone has become very, very comfortable with not taking any action. Time causes that. This is where the city is regarding these investigations. You all, the entire city, has been victimized by time. The city staff, it's not fair to them. They're in limbo, they're victims of time. Wondering if they act the way some police have, if they can get away with it. They're in limbo, wondering if they themselves, behind closed doors, are targets. They're in limbo, wondering if they threaten people, if those actions will be rewarded and not be held accountable. The citizens and frequent patrons of Godly, it's not fair to them, they're in limbo. They're victims of time, wondering if documents and reports or anything needed for retention will be selectively deleted and removed from existence. They're in limbo, wondering if you or the elected officials are current targets yourselves, which will impact your judgment and your ability to do your job. This is the department's leadership. They're in limbo, wondering if the city condemns targeting selectively or if they themselves may be one. Seeing the tolerance of the targeting, should I be concerned when I come here and frequent businesses here, volunteer at my child's school every day? Should I be worried about it? It's a fair question. All of us are victims of time. Young police officers, it's not fair, they're in limbo, trying to figure out what right looks like. Victims of time again. They're in limbo, wondering if the behavior displayed is acceptable? If it's the normal way of doing business here in Godly? There are candidates talking the opposite, they've been shown that it does not matter here. That all the talk about integrity, community policing, all that impartiality stuff is nothing more than lip service here in Godly, that's what they see. They're in limbo, wondering if their leadership is here to stay, for police leadership. That one thing will determine if these young officers choose to make policing Godly a career choice or if they need to move on. Some may like the behavior, hopefully not, that has been displayed. Some may seek a more honest, by the book, integrity-based honorable department if they stay. Godly may be able to develop into that, but not while it's in limbo, not while Godly has been victimized by time. The two police that allegations have been made against, they're in limbo also, those two, those two police are in limbo too. They're wondering if this council will tolerate what the old council and old city staff did. They're in limbo, wondering if they will be suspended, reprimanded, are found not at fault, affected, victims of time.
Fifty seconds.
They are in limbo, wondering if their threats, actions, and intimidation will continue to bear fruit for them or not? They are in limbo, wondering if they will be employed here or not. Bottom line is, Godly's been victimized by time. At some point, Godly needs to move forward, move beyond the state it is in with so much uncertainty. At first, it was a federal lawsuit. Then it was lack of city administrator. Well, all that's been done to her, and that's not fair to her, it's not fair to her one bit. What is it now? All the city staff, police, fire department, public work, admin staff, but most importantly, the citizens deserve closure. With this decision is not easy, no matter what decision you make, there are no guarantees of any predetermined outcome. Make sure, no matter what decisions you make, it's held that all of us, you included, are victims of time. Hopefully not much longer. Have a good night, thank you, folks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I dare for Tim to have the voice, Mr. Chair.
I would like to have eight on the investigation.
And, and I had already explained that to you in our conversation via email that I wasn't ready to provide you anything. I have just a little bit of information for you. Uh, I did contact the Texas Rangers. And if there is criminal activity, I have to bring the proof of criminal activity to the district attorney's office. And then the district attorney contacts the Texas Rangers to investigate. That's, that's the response I got from the Texas Rangers. Now, if you know of some other third party company that I don't, I don't have any experience in doing investigations on audio recordings where I've come from. Uh, so I don't know what third party company y'all would like for me to use. I mean, I, I don't know where to go to next. The first thing I thought of was to the Rangers, and that's where I'm at with that right now.
The Rangers want some sort of reason to verify that.
There has to be, there has to be criminal activity within those audio files. Criminal activity. Not accusations, but criminal activity. And then from there, you take it to the district attorney's office with the complaint and the proof of the criminal activity. And then the district attorney's office contacts the, the Texas Rangers to investigate. That's how it was explained to me. And that is the one, that is with Company B that does, um, quote, you know, your political, um, reviews for like cities. So that's what I had to go through. And I'm sorry, and I am very sorry it's taken so long, but I contacted them, if you remember, I had COVID on the night that y'all did this. I was out of work for a whole week. I came back, that was the first thing I did, check with Dean, what I need to do, what am I supposed to do? Um, I immediately contacted the Rangers office, left a message. It took him a week, probably two weeks, to contact me back because he too was out sick. And my email request that's on the Texas, on DPS website to contact Company B went to Austin. That's where all those emails go. And then from Austin, came back to Cleaver, and then it finally found its way to him. But in the meantime, I had made two phone calls. So with the time that you wanted this done on January the sixteenth till last week when I contacted Dean, it had been almost thirty days before I even really heard any thing back.
There's gotta be someone who's been going through that paperwork. You know, signed on the dotted line, squares under those, that they were doing this, should correct, and then, you know, if they see enough there, then they proceed forward and they say it's not, it's not a waste of their time, we'll look into this. And so, but if you're, if you're wondering from like a audio perspective, there's professionals out there that look at, you know, um, audios and modified audio, I'm sure there's some sort of professional consultant out there. But what Andy was saying, if you're talking about evidence, like what is probable evidence? How do you test the veracity of these tapes? Have they been modified? I mean, you gotta know who, what, when, where, how, why, you gotta know, you gotta know the dates, you gotta know the location. It's up to us to lay in the predicate, that's what we did in evidence before we introduced evidence, that a court will actually admit. You lay the predicate, and so when you lay the predicate, you talk about the person recording, um, you know, the date, time. And so there's a lot that goes into that. And that's, and that's what they're always looking for with me, that they're all for me, and they're looking for start to finish, is this something that I'm gonna waste all my time on? Or is this something where, have they crossed the threshold now that I can explore this?
So if, if Morgan can stand and have sponsors, that's a day we could all, that is, him, the return of the end of it. Can you take it, the long recordings to the DA, have them go through a big film like it's supposed to? Because we're not, we deny service permit, we're, we're council, correct? Is that not what the Rangers said, turn it to the DA, the DA review it? I mean, because then it may die, then they have the connections of people that need to go through the recordings and?
They're not gonna review anything unless you allege a criminal act.
So where would this be? I have a question. You just said that while investigating and while taking their statements, they're not denying the tapes. Do you listen to the tapes with them or they just are not denying that they're on the tape?
On the actual complaints that Mr. Cooper filed.
Yes.
That he sent to me. I had that, I have those portions of the tape that he provided for me and I actually turned those on because I had questions about it. My first question is, who's on that tape? Who is that?
And they're not denied.
No.
That we have?
They have denied it.
Yeah. And we don't need the first time investigation or?
Think that they have, they're not denied, neither might be denied to them.
We don't need that.
Well, in the meeting, I already talked to four or three persons that they didn't remember making those or something, I don't know.
I think the question was, and, and I, and I have questioned this myself, and I hope I'm not stepping over the line, I don't know what else to do with this. There's portions that if you're listening to the audio, you're getting like this much of it. And, and I can't tell you exactly what recording it is because I can listen to all six.
They, they're very, they're very jumbled and messed up. They were taking them while I was in his pocket, they really need to have a, an AV guy clean them up.
Yeah.
I gave two versions, I gave a version that was the totality of them, I get, I ran it through an AI-generated filter that removed some of it, but so there's two versions of each one, the original and then a cleaned up one that magnifies it. But there's a lot of policy issues and job issues too, more than criminality that could affect what's done with them, whether it's a suspension, pending the outcome or whatever. It's not a criminal or nothing, there's a whole bunch there. Um, criminal is the, is the, is one level, but there's a substantial, there's a, a, a substantial, you know, spectrum that this can cover. And you don't need a criminal act to remove an employee or to discipline an employee or to reprimand an employee or to suspend any investigation. It doesn't have to be criminal. There's plenty of policy stuff, general purpose stuff, employee handling stuff. Criminal co-comics stuff, there's, there's a gap, I mean, pick your poison. If it's criminal, that is much more difficult.
But for the Texas Rangers to?
That's criminal.
It has to be criminal.
And that would take the DA's buy-in and they haven't had a, they haven't had its?
We're cutting this off.
Sorry.
Uh, Councilmember Mize, we're gonna suggest something.
You, you asked me where we go from here. Um, I think you let Andy continue with her process, she has how many complaints, ten complaints?
Well, I had it down to five now.
Oh, down to five, okay. So she's got five complaints to go through.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm, I have five.
Oh.
Yeah, he had, totally had seven. But I'm, I have five, then I've got it down to five currently.
So she needs to go through the employee process, whatever that ends up being, and then make a decision.
Yeah, but I'm not talking about these complaints, I know you're handling them.
I know, see, that's how, this is why this is so confusing for me, because you, because we've gone from this, which I'm taking care of, to authenticating.
And it's related to the complaints because you provided the tapes.
Yes.
In conjunction with the complaints.
Right.
So essentially in our conversation, we've already figured out that Dave and Tills have authenticated them, so we no longer need to do the third party investigation. If they have not identified and they're telling you that they are on the tapes, they have authenticated them.
Well, I think, I, I don't think they're disputing that, that people were talking or who they say they are. I think it's how much of the conversation is captured, was, was it modified, were words added? And so that's, I think that's something to be heard.
And that, and I can even hear that, and I'm hard of hearing. But you can tell that it's just a portion, maybe it's because it's riding in his jacket, maybe, I don't know, you know, because I don't know where it is. Uh, but you can tell that you can hear same shit at one time and then you can't hear exactly what, so you're only picking up a portion of, of conversation. And, and I immediately went to Dean and said, I can't make heads or tails of these, some of these, until I, we got a cleaned up copy a little bit better. So I understand what they're, you know, I understand what they're saying about those snippets or clips. Because I don't feel like any one of them I listened to was a full conversation. Like, my name is Scott Morgan, it is ten oh seven AM and I'm recording clicks to get my copy. That's what I would do if I was gonna record people, I put the date, time, place where I was at, if I was gonna record someone. But we don't have that, so we don't have that information.
Is there a denial of content?
Huh?
Is there a denial of content? Is there a denial of contempt?
No.
No, now, now, that's not...
The contempt insulted me as well, too, I know.
But that's the personnel part. That's not personally, that's not part of the personality issue.
She needs to go through the tapes with them and go through each aspect of it.
Dean, you listened to the audio tapes, correct?
Yeah.
And the HR lawyer listened to the audio tapes, correct?
Yeah.
Is there anything that either of you two lawyers heard that was criminal, to, to warrant this being turned over, to make a criminal accusation and turn this over to the DA's office?
No, not, not criminal. But that wasn't the task. The task was to present it to a third-party investigator or some other, you know, criminal authority, so that you could, they could determine whether or not the tapes were obtained criminally.
Well, they're, I mean, part of what Ms. Winkle said is the Rangers want, or the DA wants a criminal accusation that's on those tapes before they'll take it from the law. And if our lawyers are not hearing any criminal accusation, then taking it to the DA becomes a moot point.
That's right. But if, but what we're doing is we're tracking down all the different avenues. So now that we've exhausted that avenue, it's the HR avenue. Unless you want us to keep going down that path.
So you said the Rangers are not good, and the FBI, have you contacted them?
I have contacted the FBI.
Okay, can you contact, can first have Morgan come in and give you that paper, and then the FBI?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my next step. It was first step I would try to do.
Before we go down that path, we have contemplation litigation and word in the F5 process for that. So... Okay, you, you're talking about getting attorneys together, you're talking about going through formal process. We are in discovery right now on the F5. So that's going to be outside the scope of what we would ordinarily do in these cases. I don't know that the ALJ would look to kind of, you know, that's different.
On doing what exactly?
Have him come in and do some sworn affidavits. I think he's a junior. He want to know why. But we're, I'm, I'm not going to recommend that. Not while we're in this process.
I mean, why can't we tell them? We want to make sure that the audio tapes are true and correct. If it's not, that's all we're asking. I'm asking you to...
No, we're not. We're asking them to swear on their oath.
I see why you...
That they're not modified, that they're, I mean, but that's what she's, she's saying. But no, I would, I'm not going to recommend. I think you're going to open up this city to all kinds of potential claims of my own.
So basically, we can't do anything with these?
We've already done something, so have the Rangers. But the task was to see if, I mean, how were they obtained? Who purchased the recording device? Who sent Morgan on the path to go and record the chief? You know, was there any, was there any confidential information? I mean, where was the recording obtained? Was it obtained in a secure area in the police department? Was there discussion about criminal activity on those that would have been confidential, but it's now been released to the public? So I think, I think those were the preliminary questions, and that's why I went down the path of contacting the Rangers.
But that's supposed to get us to, at least ask him to verify it. I mean, if he's willing to do it.
Well, we can do that through the discovery process if that's an issue that he's going to raise.
Yeah, but not on the second date.
We are in the process, yeah. So we have thirty days to respond to, well, I think it's March 1st now to respond to their discovery, and we'll have some of our own here.
I will just be, I still think we should ask him.
I think in the end, the bottom line here is, we either do, uh, we either frankly, we fire them and take the risk of it, or we don't.
That's what that's, that's what we're, we're outside the scope, I think, of the discussion. Yeah, because he's not on here. If you want to put him on, you can.
I make a motion to call Officer Scott Morgan in to swear that the audio recordings are true and correct, and to contact the FBI tomorrow, both of those tomorrow, and see if they will take it.
Can you repeat that one more time, please?
I make a motion to, to say staff to call Officer Scott Morgan to swear to those audio recordings as true and correct, and to contact the FBI both tomorrow.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Papadoussis and second by Councilmember Brnielsen to call Mr. Scott Morgan to swear audios are true and correct and to contact the FBI. I have that word correctly.
Yes, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Just to clarify, we're asking for the original audios?
I don't already have it.
We have many, many different versions of audios. Does he going to produce originals for us? And that's, that, that was my comment about discovery process. Like, I mean, if he's going to produce originals, I think that's good, that's our process of litigation process, and whatever, whatever path he chooses.
And we produce the, what was I reading?
Your oral discussion, I didn't say oral discussion.
Produce the original and the enhanced. And let's just figure out what they want to do, or like, decide what's what he wants to, if you will, verify, and then send both of them to the FBI, whatever, however new we got, send them off, let them deal with it.
See, I need clarification. There's just a legal motion for this to be adopted.
Discussion and possible action on third-party investigation into audio recordings. For Danny to the Godly Police Department. Yes, I'd say it's, we can, it's a, sorry.
I would rather let me get those to discovery than to open ourselves up to more litigation, or it gets a little far enough and not even...
Something like that. Motion's just going against what our legal counsel just told us needed to be left to discovery, because you can put your personal dealings aside and let, allow the process to take place. And if you do want to go to the FBI, then present it, just like we do with the Rangers, but allow them to finish their part before you open us up to more litigation laws.
Other results, was that? Process of discovery versus this?
Our, our recommend, now I have a problem making this recommendation in the open session. Our recommendation is always to follow the process. If we need to go back and discuss this more, we can do that in closed session, but our recommendation, follow the process is in place. That's where you're saying this.
We have a request to executive session for council advice. We have an agenda for council vice.
Yes, we can move it around. If you want to call.
You want a motion?
Yes.
We have the table of motion, or...
We can move right now to general vice.
I don't think there are questions on general vice, so.
Oh, I'll say it.
Uh, motion by Councilmember Mize and second by Councilmember Garber to move this into executive session. Discussion, Councilmember Garber?
Sorry.
Hi.
Ah.
All right, have those queries by zero?
Am I free?
Not yet. Uh... Pursuits in Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551, Texas Department of Public Section 551. Point 071, consultation with attorney on any or work on pending or contemplating litigation in a matter of which they continue to turn it to the government body of the Texas Rules of Professional Conduct in the State Bar of Texas, where we conflict with Chapter 551. When we go to executive session at...
Why can't I share? There we go.
Godly City Council hearing this is at ten session at 10:06 p.m. and reading the open session at 10:29 p.m. We have a motion on the floor. Any more session? Councilmember?
No.
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 Yes. Yes.
The motion does not pass, but I vote for a free flip. Moving on to item D, discussion on street maintenance funds. Mayor Pro Tem Papadoussis. Mr. Lawson?
This is a, this is a, for that discussion, you had taken a maximum, you had a motion.
Wouldn't the motion of failure be the action on the agenda, sir?
Yeah, I mean, so there's...
So she's dead.
She's dead.
So just ask after.
Y'all, unless y'all want to vote to reopen that, we can always go back to item on the agenda, reopen it, your motion is second, and then we can...
All right, then, on to item D, discussion on street maintenance funds. Mayor Pro Tem Papadoussis.
Yes, I would like to discuss. It was a ordinance, so we changed the order to discussion. I'd like to discuss, uh, street lighting, funds for cash account, transferring to the street maintenance, and also that we would talk about this more in March. But I would like to talk about it now, get what council wants to do, so she knows what amount of money to afford, what we need as a municipal council to do. I suggest a two million for cash account. A hundred one, perfect cash account, which has eight million in it.
Well, hang on, listen. No.
Three million?
No. You have $489,321 in your street maintenance account. That's sales tax money. That's your sales tax for street maintenance.
What's that number?
$489,321 in street maintenance. That's your sales tax for street maintenance. Those funds need to be used, because you have an election that said, we're going to use these street maintenance funds. And so these are sales tax dollars. This is not money that comes out of your property tax, it's sales tax money. You want to use those funds first.
So we had an election. We just voted on the state council to do that?
No, you have an actual election. Probably, I think it's coming up in 2025. I think it's every news. So I'm not sure how many years yours is. It's probably over two to five, four years. So you had a street sales tax election to collect a certain amount of tax to go towards the street maintenance. And that's how much money you have in there so far. As of, now, this is as of January, the end of January, when we finished reconciling accounts for January. In 4B, you have $3,067,690. So that, all that nine million dollars is not in, it's pulled into an account, but it's distributed to other accounts. So...
Is it restricted use then? Is that what that is?
For your, for your street maintenance?
Well, I'm saying, even though it's pooled, it's restricted use.
Yeah, because it doesn't all belong to the general fund.
Why not?
Yeah, it doesn't all belong to the general fund. And the reason I brought this up is because we, we need to expend the sales tax money first. Because what's the use of going to the voters and saying, we want to use this sales tax money, if you're not going to use it first? And you get rid of those funds first, you guys, you know, nearly $500,000 in there, to get started on doing your street maintenance.
How about this one?
And then a lot more.
Yeah.
And then we need to sit down. Of course, we don't have a public works director right now, but we do need to, uh, we need to sit down, we did a budget time, with a new public works director that would actually take a map of the streets and come up with a plan, and that should be any of them. We're going to take this portion of this one for this fiscal year, and this portion of this one. And now that we know we can do an IRA with the county, then every year we go to them and say, we do the streets that we want to do, and we know how much we need to budget that month. That would be my suggestion. Unless you, I mean, $2 million doesn't go very far when you're talking about completely redoing the streets. Now, if you're talking about maintaining them and trying to bring them up and get, you know, get the potholes fixed and those kind of things, that's where the street maintenance funds. But $2 million, I don't think it's going to get much done as far as all of the streets in Brooklyn. Because you have some that are in pretty bad shape, really bad shape. The, the one that, is that West Room Road that the developer, that Thomas has been working with the developer? Before we do anything with that, we need to make sure that he's going to take care of that, take care of correcting that. And that will help with some of that funding that we need to work on that roadway. So I just wanted, before we get in ordinance to make any kind of budget amendment, especially for $2 million, I wanted to make sure that y'all were aware that you've got quite a bit of funds just in your street maintenance alone that can be used and needs to be expended, before you, we pull from anywhere else.
So we have $9 million minus $3 million for 4B. So that's $6 million. So we're just...
Well, we have, we have $3,982 for the general fund.
Yeah, but say we're just sitting on $4 million just for what?
Doing now?
We're sitting on $4 million in our bank account for what?
Well, you've got long-term debt. Um, from here.
We have our endless.
You also have, and that comes out of your 4B account, though, that then can help the general fund. You actually have long-term debt that looks like, is it for this building? I'm guessing for the, for this particular building. I'm looking at pulled cash reports that we pulled today. But you have long-term debt that I see on here, and then the water in the sewer fund, which is not in with that, but all of that is all together in one account.
We have like a different accounts.
You do have different accounts. You have a, but you only have, you only have accounts for court... You have a, but you only have, you only have accounts for court technology, court security, police department has a, not a crime fund, but a seizure fund type account. Four B is not separate from your pool of cash. So it's, it's separated here, but it's not separated at the bank. Um, so I mean, yeah, you've got accounts, but these are not separated. And when you look at the checking account, you know, you've got eight million dollars for, three million, nine hundred and eighty-two belongs to the general fund, and three million and sixty-seven belongs four B. And then you've got, and I'm not sure if this just says street. You got a million, sixty-six thirteen in streets, but that's not your maintenance. I don't know if there's any kind of other funding that was for streets that I don't, that I'm not aware of. Um.
So we have, you said a million and a half, two million dollars outside the building to operate the city. Say we have, what'd you say, a six-month reserve for the city?
I don't know what your reserve is right now, because these numbers, according to your budget, are way off.
Okay.
I mean, they're, they're way off. I would say that you have to have at least, you want to have at least ninety to a hundred and twenty days of working capital. Because if anything came up and this place blew away, you'd have to still pay your bills. And you can see what those bills are, um, you know, from the reports I've given you. Um, I mean, it's, it's just my recommendation that we take some of those street maintenance funds out first before we go with anything else. Yeah.
I mean, we're going to book your half a million dollars in those funds.
Yeah. But I would start off with that before we move any other funds over. Plus, if you move it over there, we're, what is our plan? I mean, I think we need to have some kind of a plan of how we're going to use those funds so they just don't get disseminated over there. And then at the end of the fiscal year, we have our revenue left over, and we still haven't got the street, streets maintenance. Does that make sense?
So then we're supposed to do a survey of all our roads to see what needs to be done, correct?
Well, if I had to guess, that probably was not enough. Because there's, there's information that we can't get from him just so we can finish plans.
We have no information, Blue.
Hopefully he'll bring information to us tomorrow. I can't guarantee it, but I'm just saying, you know, we, we can't find anything like that. Therefore, that's why we've gone to Bureau and asked them to help us with that, just so we could do some of that stuff.
We might sell our final building on that.
So Jacob can stand in here waiting.
We'll keep it waiting.
I ain't it doing when he comes over and starts.
I would say, yeah, we bring yourself.
Yeah.
Check it out.
Yeah. No, I have to.
Do the power over from him. If he's not, if, if something happens, he's not willing to give it over.
Yes.
He's already got it.
Yes.
I actually think they have obligations, engineers, to provide it to you. I mean, you can make our own estate or public funds, and we have, we have to protect the public risk. And so you'll notice when I write in engineering contracts, engineers usually push back and say they want to have ownership of their rights and their license to the city. And so we always say, no, we're not paying for public funds, they don't want to stay. So that would be our.
Going back to the other subject, I personally think we need to, street road needs to be fixed and get estimates. And the only move, once we split our tax money, only money over to cover that, that item, that, that what we want to fix, not just start a fairly bunch of money over there, because you're going to get pieced and build out a whole bunch of stuff and you have nothing to make your show for.
So at what point are we going to do that? Our roads are piss poor, oh, worse than that. We literally had people breaking rims on our roads because the potholes are so bad. Other bridges is doing their job, I don't know how to go around them. But we have to replace roads, we have to finish up the sides, the interior. We don't have a hard program or, or mandates, we go out and tar all these cracks. So that way, when the water gets in and freezes, they bust it out. It'd be roots, the base. Our roads are getting worse and worse every single day. Every single hundred runs, and they don't fill the pothole any greatly. I love pothole, I like it, fixed, actually a pothole. So we, as a council, need to stop this sitting up here, and we actually fix some roads, I mean, splitting some money. I'm with you.
I don't think anybody's against fixing the roads, but right now we don't have a director of public work, so who's going to enter up this plan by beginning to get started until you have somebody in that position?
Comes with me.
Council, Thomas and Amy, so we're going to have them together, put together this plan to rip up these roads and put those in place instead of just waiting a couple weeks for a public works director.
I mean, we can wait, but if that person doesn't do it, we just wait longer. That's what we've done for years, we've waited.
But why is that?
Why did the last director not do it?
I don't know, yeah. Was it more than that?
Why did the director actually rewrite it?
Still wasn't, so, no. But I highly doubt that anybody would put a place like that forward and not want to do the things that we told them to do. So I just don't see why we would start rebuilding money and doing this now before we get the plan in place. So that really doesn't, we probably do, we do two million. But what if we get two? Then you do all that money, and then you have to do another budget amendment to do it back. Are there consequences for doing budget amendments?
It's not really accounting procedures.
Okay, so then.
No, nothing by the local government, because I don't think that it's, it's frowned upon when your auditors go, why are you having so many of these amendments? Why have you not prepared in your budget and plans appropriately?
Could you enable pressure along? Would you help us on?
For doing a lot of budget amendments?
Hmm.
Not so much.
Not so much.
Not so much. I mean, you can always just, while they're happening, it's just not where the accounting procedures, and it doesn't look good for the city. I, I'm, I'm just a planner. I am a planner. And before I come to you and ask you for money, I would make sure I had it planned out how I would want to do that. The mayor sat down, we didn't kind of even talk about that in I L A before we even got a chance to talk to the commissioner. Because I said I would love to be able to do that, because that's what you do in Tarrant County. You, you rely on precincts to help you with your roads when you're a small city and you don't have the manpower or equipment. That's not unheard of in Tarrant County. But I understand that when COVID hit, that kind of stopped, and I understand that, too, it stopped out there. But now that we're kind of opened that door back up to where we can do that and go ahead and, you know, maybe this is just the first three streets. Maybe we add three more streets after that until we use these funds up. By that time, you're, you're talking about budget season where you can really set a plan of what you want to do with your roadways. And you're being responsible to the citizens that elected to put that sales tax on, on ballot and voted for. You're showing them what you did with, what you're doing with that money. That's just my recommendation.
Have you put out a notice that we're going to hire a public works director?
Yes. And it was earlier in my report, and we've had about four or five responses, and they're really good responses. That's something we're going to have to talk about the next meeting is salary.
Well, right now, yeah, as you talk to these people, uh, have a plan or, you know, instead of him coming in and saying, oh, by the way, we want you to do this, now that you're talking to them, one of your first responsibilities is going to be upgrade our streets. What is your plan for that? And we want this done with him, we want a preliminary plan within thirty days if you 're being hired. We want a plan of actions in sixty days if you're being hired. But that enters, or not, waiting for the next person to be hired, and then we wait after we direct him, and then we wait till he does it. So as soon as he's here, he knows in sixty days, he needs a good plan for it.
Mm-hmm.
For that to do the, it's going to be process.
So for example, on, on the road sales tax, you can only use that on roads that existed and never be taxed, passed?
Not that I'm aware of. Is that true? I don't think that's, I don't think that's correct.
Hope for the road since you're here, that.
It's sales tax, your, your citizens, some of them will tie you for it, but hopefully they'll come to your counter. But I don't think it's just for the roads that are existence, no matter what.
What is, what is the question here?
Never you ask these roads to ask, three years. We can only ask for the roads that existed at time, um, new roads.
There was a, there was a specific road tax that you all pass.
Yes.
What? Sales, sales tax.
Oh, the portion, oh, portion sales tax that. Yeah, I mean, there's.
It's a, I.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I mean, we can look at the little parameters. Sometimes when you do adopt taxes like that, and there are limitations. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
What's the one? Yeah, I don't, I'm not familiar with your.
I never saw that.
You have it.
I had never heard of that before. But that doesn't mean that it's, um, correct.
So that's okay, you'll say that it's.
We'd have to look, we'd have to look what the ballot says.
What, what year was it?
Action.
When it was adopted originally?
Original? Yeah, I don't know.
Is that top that or top of the year?
We, we just have to look at the ballot.
Oh.
The ballot line, which said.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying.
I don't remember.
Sometimes the ballot line just said, Rob, that you can use it for basically anything watching in the world.
That's why you were bringing up those perimeter.
Yeah, that's usually what one council will do, is that Rob, no weapons out. So those funds are stuff that just won't be taken with tax.
That would be a waste of money if you couldn't use it on new road rates or roads that are coming in, especially here. Y'all are growing like crazy, you know, development coming in, those kind of things. You wouldn't just want to use it just on copper, you'd want to use it for expansion. So I don't know why you would do, put anything like that in the ballot in the age.
I was just saying, if we're looking to do something now, we're going to.
I was worried of two out of three with one in West Railroad, that's the one that contracted the. Well, it says east, it's north west.
Oh.
There's this, there's this thing in there. Uh, the, the contracted sewer stuff, we don't want to hit that with, we know if you're coming back and saying, actually, let's not fix our street. But definitely, I mean, it comes to iron down from this point to this point, get something more specific, I mean, from A to B on that start.
You have to do eleven twenty-eight. Thing is horrible for lots of citizens coming out of there in the morning, going to work, taking the kids to school or whatever. Maybe school and work, but.
If we do this, use this money for repairs, when do we get to a point that we actually give road streets or cover this flat or a city because, because that's where our, we are, we're going to eventually have to do that. So do we use that money now to fix the potholes that we have, or do we just start with a program and say, okay, now pick the worst streets and now completely redo them? Why is that something they can pay for out of our funds? Is it something we need to look at a street bond? I mean, what are, long-term? Because we can keep them in the citizens' money and the stuff that we're going to do for years, we're going to have to keep patching, patching, patching. Or do we, when do we get to a point to say, it's time to start doing one street at a time, concrete or concrete, like do it. And you can, you can do that through a long-term debt. I mean, and we get our engineers involved.
Yes.
To find out, you know, uh, cost for streets, branding streets, moving your infrastructure in, replacing your infrastructure, because I'm sure everything underneath a street is all that needs to be replaced. Why you got the street where, how would you not picture your infrastructure? Instead of.
Have the engineers run through your streets on good, bad.
Did you say, like, that they were working on half of, then it was supposed to have such?
It was supposedly, he went and burned every single street, and it was supposed to have a report for us.
So maybe you're going to go through that, which is, it is, you're going to say. And then that sounds like a share routine, favor them to put in that their system, that they're building for the city as well.
And that's just, that's part of your capital movement, right? Put together private, high streets.
So section three twenty-seven dot zero zero eight, use of tax revenue, revenue from the tax imposed on this chapter going to be used only to maintain or repair municipal streets or sidewalks, listing on the date of you wishing to adopt a tax.
Is that, is that the actual tax?
That's the municipal self-use tax for street maintenance.
Okay, is that the limit? The city has?
Yes.
I mean, have we confirmed, is that, is that on the bottom? Or do we have that?
It's a street, like very specific street tax.
Don't fix any streets and do sub, don't fix any streets and do subrutions and anything else in New York.
Well, then that would take care of your godly proper, I mean, your godly, well, sorry, it's like godly property, that would take care of that, and that's where your worst streets are, right? And as your developers are coming in, they're building your newer streets. So that's where your main focus is then.
We wouldn't make the developers fix the roads that they're, subdivision changes?
Yep. I've been asked that, and I, I mean, I live in, I, I worked in town once before, right? I think you have to do it.
You have to do a rough proportional, you know, and so the, what it asks has to be roughly, roughly proportional to the, um.
Project.
Basically. So, so typically, like in a subdivision, whatever public infrastructure they're going to build in the subdivision, like streets, discussion of streets, um, that would be roughly proportional to, to the work division, right? But if you're going to ask them to do outside work, like leading into that subdivision, then you can further, further out in the analysis. And this is, this isn't just Texas law, it's U.S. Supreme Court law.
Sure, it doesn't quite seem right. Yeah, it was, kind of, it was used to, uh, school buses twice a day and twelve cars, and now it's, you get three hundred cars up and down the road and five school buses.
It'd be, it'd be nice. Yeah, so, I mean, you can do the analysis and whatever that gets you, but usually it's, it's with incentives. It's economic development incentives to get you that extra mile or whatever it is for a project that they're going to do. That's how you incentivize them.
Let's do that.
I'm sure that's something an engineer should do.
We're making a motion to postpone R D until.
Oh, okay. Hope you still can break.
I'm sorry?
Thomas.
Yes.
Clarify what you're going to be.
I had already notes on that, so we could get that narrowed down by the commissioner.
R D, discussion can cross the action of adopting resolution number R zero two dash two zero two four dash zero six, authorizing city secretary to execute joint election agreement with governing and schools.
We can motion to approve R D.
I am a motion by council member Yarborough and a second by council member Rodriguez to approve the resolution number R zero two dash two zero two four dash six, authorizing city secretary to execute joint election agreement with governing and schools. Discussion? Discussion?
Bring in those, what's the last day of press conference?
Oh, what, the election?
Yeah, the election.
And, or, or yes, I don't have the, I don't really... I don't know. But I know they have to share just a location with us. Because the school district has to share a location with them in this ability. So, that's the only reason why we're here. But we're not sharing this, we're two separate agents.
One second.
We just have to share this one location.
I know that, but I'm just wondering about the page, the last page.
Oh, I thought you were gonna...
The last page of file? Is that what you said?
No, the last page that we can call for a correction.
Can we just put in a block of the county?
Well, we've heard, and having attorneys look at that, our election is totally separate from their election. We're only doing it as, we're not even using joint services such as the auto mark machine, any of that. We're only using joint locations.
I remember I asked you about this, I'm gonna ask her, is that the name?
Yeah, cause I know you called me that minute, remember? You called me because you're at the school board meeting. It doesn't affect us at all. And I double-checked the next morning with Elizabeth at Totes, who does their election work. And she said, absolutely not, because we thought we were gonna have, I was afraid we might have to call special needs on the thirteenth just to cover the school district. And we didn't have to. Because we are not sharing anything to do with this election. We're not sharing any costs. We all have our own judges, we all have our own election clerks. So, like, or the school district will have to pay for early voting clerks. You don't have to pay for them because you've got us. We were already being paid, so you don't have to pay us extra. The only thing you'll pay for is a watching judge. So, none of our stuff is even intermediated at all. Normally, if you do that, it's normally handled by the county. And then the county can take all of the ballots, the clerks, the judges, all the equipment and split it between all the entities. That's a joint election. But this one doesn't affect us at all. We're just sharing a location with them for more convenience. And they don't have a place, I guess, that was possible for them to have it at, is what I was told.
So, is our, I can find my point of election agreement?
I have it from this school right here.
I mean, for like ours, does it state that they'll have it?
So, if it's not a joint election, why are we in a resolution for a joint election?
Because the school district cannot hold an election on its own. They have to piggyback for this, for this city or a county. And they, I may be calling it wrong, I'm using public slang, but if that's other colleagues, piggyback on any entity. That's one. But if, but we're not using any equipment, we're not sharing any of this. We have our own, our own...
Is this joint election agreement? Cause that's, that's the language we have to work with.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it doesn't make sense. I would throw it around, I mean, but that's, that's the company. This, this, that's toward our market we have to work with.
So, where are they having their holding places?
It's gonna be RB Godley for early voting and then election day will share the park.
Is that the, the...
The pavilion. The pavilion.
Yeah, they're doing all their early voting at the pavilion.
No, the, the school district early voting will be at RB Godley Elementary.
See, that's...
I thought our pavilion, I thought they wanted to use our pavilion.
They're doing early voting right now. There's two different elections.
No, the school district. Yeah, they say they were using the pavilion for early voting. Cause we already...
It's not what they said, that's not what they said in...
No, they didn't say that they're, they didn't ask us to part of the voting. Not to me.
Well, they have for me. I didn't know if they confirmed it in that with you or not.
No, I'm...
Oh.
Yeah, it says in our order, early voting is RB Godley Elementary.
I just hope that fell through.
No, I didn't do that.
And they asked if they could rent the pavilion for early voting. Yeah. We're doing our early voting here because it's easier for us than somebody leaving offices. So, we're gonna be here. And then they wanted to use that. And then on election day, well, I'll be there. Well, we won't, but everybody, everything will be held on election day.
Well, yeah, yeah, I knew that, but usually early voting will be the school.
I don't know. That's what they did. They put in a request to rent the pavilion for early voting.
I mean, election on the altar of course. So, if we're using our facilities to be, to, to, to be higher, early voting times low?
No, 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 apparently you would get on the actual election day, they're gonna be at the same places. We're not gonna be joint before that. Because we're here and they're... Yeah, we'll be here for early voting, we'll be here for the city. But they're, they're separate. They only ask for election day.
The joint election agreement is just for the fourth election day.
Yeah, it's not for anything before that. And then they just have to have that. I mean, it's required for us then. I mean, if he, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what else to say.
Yeah, it's just because we're in...
So, we're, we're...
Can you turn the session?
Hi, hi.
Uh, hi.
Motion for I D to approve the resolution number R zero two two zero two four dash zero six, authorizes three secretary next week, a joint election here with government and school district passes five zero. We have no arms of the period of interest, that's your business. We are adjourned at eleven five fifteen.